Welcome everyone to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. I am the Mayor councillor Georgina Papafolio. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are viewing at home. Due to the declaration of state of disaster in Victoria and introduction of stage four restrictions, councillors will be attending this Ordinary Council meeting by electronic means. This meeting is deemed open to the public via an online livestream available through council's website. An audio and video recording of the meeting will be published on council's website after the meeting. The application used to livestream this meeting requires details on registration. However, these details are hidden from all other attendees at the meeting. Members of the public will not be recorded in this process and Brimbank City Council does not record this information. Item one, opening, please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Wurundjeri people, and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging. Item two, council commitment, I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment. Others may be seated. As the council, we will act in the best interest of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our councillor code of conduct. Thank you. Item three, apologies or leave of absence. There is only one apology today, our CEO Helen Morrissey. And we've got our acting CEO Neil Whiteside in her position. So welcome Neil. Item four, councillors, do I have any disclosure of conflicts of interest? Item five.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move an extraordinary motion.
And could you please state that councillor Goodrich?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the items listed as 13 on the agenda, notices of motion, be considered after item eight, congratulations. And that the items listed as items 13.4, notice of no confidence in the mayor and 13.2, LGV Inspectorate Decision Review on the agenda, be considered first and second respectively, in the order of notices of motion listed as item 13 in the agenda.
So just to repeat that you would like that move to item...
After item eight on congratulations, Madam Mayor.
And the second part of the notice of motion was the order of the notices of motion. Could you state which one first?
13.4 will be the first and 13.2 will be the second.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
What's the point of order councillor Headitch?
Requesting a clarification for moving something from the public area to the public area, bringing it forward into that space. What's the reason for it?
We can do that councillor Headitch.
Yeah, I know that.
If there's a seconder.
I'm looking for a reason, please.
She doesn't need to supply a reason.
Ask the manager for governance for an opinion, please.
It's my call. Yeah, I accept it. Do I have a second? If I don't have a seconder, I lapses. So councillor Aziz, I'll put it to a vote. Is it possible to have that on screen? Yes. On screen, okay. Councillor Goodrich, do you mind reading that for us? We can't hear you councillor.
The item listed as 13 on the agenda, notices of motion be considered after item eight, congratulations. And B, the items listed as 13.4, motion of no confidence in the mayor and 13.2, local government inspectorate decision review on the agenda, be considered first and second respectively, in the orders, in the order of notices of motion listed as item 13.
Okay, so the other two items will follow then, the other two notices.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Essentially, it's moving the notices of motion forward.
The whole block, okay. And the seconder was councillor Aziz. All right, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you for that. Okay. Item five. There is one item to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate the item as confidential? Councillor Borg?
Yes, I'll move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you for that. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Lancashire? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item six, confirmation of minutes of previous meeting. There are minutes of a previous meeting to be confirmed this evening. May I have a mover to a motion to confirm these minutes? Councillor David?
One of the previous meetings, Madam Mayor, I was read in the order tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Allen? I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Okay, item seven, condolences. There are no item of condolences this evening. Item eight, congratulations. There are no item of congratulations this evening. So now, I believe we go to item 13, notices of motion. So councillors, as per the earlier resolution to alter the order of business, we will now consider notices of motion. There are four notices of motion for consideration. Councillors, I remind you that the notice of motion must be moved as printed in the papers and only if seconded can an amendment be moved. If a notice of motion is not moved at the council meeting in which it is listed the notice of motion lapses. So, the first one we're doing is 13.4. Let me just get to it. Okay, the motion is that council declares it has no confidence in the mayor and requests she step aside. Do I have a mover for that notice of motion? Councillor Headitch? Could you read the...
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm just stuck on mute there. The motion is that council declares it has no confidence in the mayor and requests you step aside.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Virginia Tarkos?
I second the motion as per by the business papers. Thank you.
Would the mover like to speak to this motion?
I would, Madam Mayor, thank you. Councillors, I put this notice of motion forward after asking myself why bother. The reason I am putting it forward is that I care about the future governance of this, this community and the leaders we put into the role of mayor with our trust and our support.
Councillor Aziz?
I'm going to put this to a put, please.
Okay, you want to...
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me councillor Headitch, I'm chairing this meeting.
I'm asking a point of order.
Councillor Aziz has asked to put this to a put. Do I have a seconder to put this to a put? Councillor Lancashire?
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me.
Madam Mayor.
All right.
Point of order.
Excuse me, councillor Tarkos and councillor Headitch.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
I'm chairing here. Okay, this has been, this has been put to a put. I will put it to a vote if people want it to be put as a put.
Democracy, Madam Mayor, democracy.
Oh, well, that's right. Let's put it to a vote. All right, councillors. Those in favour in putting this notice of motion to a put? Indicate if you're in favour of this. All right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those against? One, two, and one abstain. Okay. All right, the notice of motion has been put to a put. That means there is no discussion on this notice of motion. We now vote to the notice of motion. And I will read it for you councillors. That council declares it has no confidence in the mayor and requests you step aside. Those who vote in favour of this notice of motion? Indicate it now, please. One, two. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And one abstain. Councillor Lancashire has asked for a division. Okay. Those who voted in favour of the notice of motion? Put your hands up, please. Councillor John Headitch and councillor Virginia Tarkos. Those against? Put your hands up, please. Councillor Victoria Borg, councillor Kim Tiengtrung, councillor Margaret Goodrich, councillor Daniel Allen, councillor Genev Aziz, councillor Bruce Lancashire, councillor Sam David. Thank you. And councillor Dwi Na Farm, you abstain, is that correct? Thank you. Okay, so this notice of motion is lost. The next note of notice of motion, local government inspectorate decision review. The motion is, has been put forward by councillor Headitch. Would you like to read that notice of motion councillor Headitch?
I would, Madam Mayor. The notice of motion is, as it comes up on my screen, I apologise. The notice of motion is that council requests the local government inspectorate to review its 17th of August 2020 decision and determine whether councillor Georgina Papafolio has breached the Local Government Act on the basis of new evidence.
Okay, so you're the mover for this councillor Headitch. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Virginia Tarkos? Would the mover like to speak to this notice of motion?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. I'll try and get started again. As councillors know, this is a difficult area. The local government inspectorate came out with a decision on the 17th of August 2020.
Councillor Allen?
I request that the, that the notice of motion be put, please.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Councillor, councillor Allen has requested councillors that this notice of motion is put. Do I have a seconder?
Disgrace, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Lancashire?
She's hiding things.
Councillor Headitch, you continue with this behaviour and I'll have to give you a warning. Thank you.
No worries.
Okay, councillors. This has been moved by councillor Daniel Allen and has been seconded by councillor Bruce Lancashire. We are voting whether this put is accepted. Those in favour, put your hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Those against? One, two. That's it. Okay. So the notice of motion of the put goes ahead. Councillors, now we are voting on the substantive notice of motion which reads, the council requests the local government inspectorate to, A, review its 17th of August 2020 decision, B, determine whether myself, councillor Georgina Papafolio, has breached the Local Government Act on the basis of new evidence. Those in favour of this notice of motion, put your hand up, please. One, two. Those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. It's lost. Councillor Lancashire has requested for a division. Those who voted against? No, sorry, those who voted in favour of this notice of motion, please put your hand up. Councillor John Headitch? And councillor Virginia Tarkos. Those who voted against, put your hand up, please. So we've got councillor Victoria Borg, councillor Kim Tiengtrung, councillor Margaret Goodrich, councillor Bruce Lancashire, councillor Sam David, councillor Genev Aziz and councillor Daniel Allen. And councillor Dwi Na Farm, you abstain again. Thank you, that's recorded. Okay. We move on to the next notice of motion. Oh no, before we do that, I'd like to say a few words on these two notices of motion. Councillor Headitch, I'm sure you are aware that I was not impressed with your notices of motion when I received them last Wednesday evening. In relation to the first notice of motion, no confidence in the mayor and requests you steps aside. When you have the confidence of the majority of councillors, it's an indication that the majority of my fellow councillors support me. Councillors do not always agree with each other and having respectful debate about matters is normal and often results in more robust outcomes. However, not agreeing with me is no reason to put forward such a notice of motion. Support of the majority confirms that I have the confidence of the council. In relation to the second notice of motion, local government inspectorate to review its decision and to determine whether I have breached the Local Government Act motion.
Point of order.
Local government inspectorate has investigated this. Now does the proposer of this motion know what the local government inspectorate considered or not considered? This is the end of both matters. I would like to say again, and I've said this before, the values and resilience of people, organisations and communities has certainly been testing during this time of COVID-19. I'm very proud, excuse me councillor Headitch.
I'm trying to raise a point of order, Madam Mayor.
I am very proud that we, not I, like most people in our community, have worked extremely hard to work through and overcome challenges that we confront on a daily basis, especially during this pandemic. It's been important for the CEO, the executive, the majority of councillors and me personally and for the integrity and standing of council that we have not allowed ourselves to be distracted from this path. I say it again, this council wants what is best for our community. The community are not interested in the disagreements between councillors. We have and we will continue to work through all manner of challenges in a professional and respectful manner. No one can say this council has not been successful under these unprecedented COVID circumstances.
Point of order.
I am extremely proud that we have received over $75 million in investment for our community for COVID response and recovery during the last six months. This is what I call a fabulous leadership in Brimbank.
With the transparency, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Tarkos, that's a warning for you as well.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the next notice of motion and that is... 13.1. Okay. The M80 noise, councillor Headitch. I believe this notice of motion is yours as well. Would you like to read your notice of motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This notice of motion is that council writes to the Minister for Roads and Road Safety, the Honourable Ben Carroll MP, requesting the state government, one, provide an explanation as to why the Department of Transport, formerly Vic Roads, applies different noise impact criteria for different suburbs on the same freeway, the M80. Two, review the current traffic noise reduction policy and any other relevant documentation to provide equitable and consistent treatment of the impact of noise across the road network. Three, provides council with the literature review and expert international evidence-based research and advice Department of Transport users to assess the impacts of road and vehicular noise and pollution on community health and wellbeing, including research and evidence supporting the prescribed safe noise and pollution levels. And four, provide the above details in response to residents of Esmond Street, RDA, with a copy to councillors on the actions to be implemented by the Department of Transport to mitigate the impact of vehicle noise and pollution from the M80 Ring Road on residents in Esmond Street, RDA and surrounding areas to ensure community health and wellbeing outcomes are within the prescribed measures. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Do I have this? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Sam David, are you the seconder for this notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Thank you for that. All right, would the mover like to speak to this notice of motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would. The Western Ring Road, the M80 is a freeway under the care and management of the Department of Transport. And we understand that the M80 was first planned in or around 1969 and that the current alignment may have been established around early mid 80s. It's understood that the construction commenced in 1989. Council and councillors, as we know, have received a number of complaints from residents of Esmond Street, RDA over our four-year life, complaining of noise and associated health and wellbeing impacts associated with the M80. I know myself, I was down on the 274 Forest Street site, in RDA, which is alongside the M80 and on Sunday afternoon walking around and the hum was huge. So I absolutely am empathetic with the residents of RDA and the noise I have to put up with. Previously, council officers have written to Department of Transport on behalf of residents in regard to noise in the area associated with the M80 but haven't had any success in obtaining a timely and suitable solution. A local resident has written regularly to us explaining the problem and complaining of different and better noise mitigation measures being used on one section of the M80 in Glenroy, Gaun Bray, where there is a 63 decibel limit in place in the city of Moorland in comparison to RDA, where there's a 68 decibel limit in place apparently, causing confusion about the prescribed standards and the research and evidence backing the measures being used. People don't know what's going on when they see that there are different standards being applied in different parts of the freeway. The levels of air pollution impacting RDA residents at different times of day under different conditions like rain and wind and heat and cold aren't known but are also concerning local residents. Air quality monitoring equipment and reports like those provided to the Brooklyn community by the EPA are also being requested by residents given the regular frequency of south-west and southerly winds during winter blowing off the M80 and northerly winds during summer blowing freeway dirt, dust and fumes into the suburb. Vic Roads' response back in 2018 advised that they have offered further noise testing at the resident's property and advice about options for them to pursue in the context of Vic Roads' traffic noise policy and the guide to reduction of traffic noise. All previous investigations have found that the objectives of this policy have been met. But residents, and I can vouch for them having stood there on Sunday again and heard it myself at this location, there is a real problem. Vic Roads have provided similar advice to the resident via the then Minister for Roads and Road Safety, the Honourable Luke Pennellin. Most recently, council wrote to the Department of Transport on the 1st of May 2020 seeking a response to the resident's request for expert health and wellbeing advice on the impact of freeway noise, but nothing has been received as yet.
We've got one minute councillor Headitch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My point to councillors is that we have seen these complaints for a long period of time and the council officers have tried to achieve responses from the Department of Transport over that period of time, but with no success. This notice of motion lifts the bar by asking councillors to support the residents of RDA with their concerns and to write to the Minister for Roads and Road Safety, sorry, the Honourable Ben Carroll, requesting that the state government provide the advice we've sought in the notice of motion. I commend this notice of motion to councillors and seek their support.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor David, would you like to speak to this notice of motion? We can't hear you councillor David. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I think councillor Headitch covered just about everything and indeed it's been an issue with us for a long, long time, Madam Mayor. And I remember once back in 97, we wrote to Vic Roads then and they told me then that the level of noise is not up to the limit that they request or require type of acoustic type of walls or a fence or type of that. But it's a continuation, as I said, and thank God with the new estate in Pichira Road, the developers put a brick acoustic wall, which is make the difference this part of the side of Sunshine West. But the Esmond Street, it's the last street before the Ring Road, Madam Mayor. They have in front of them more park, more parks are, it's an open space as we know. And across the road is the Ring Road, right in front of them. And also you've got the exit and entry into the Ring Road by the people turning left and right to go away from, in the east and the ones that are coming back in the west. So it's too noisy indeed and I feel sorry for those people. They've been battling for a long time, ringing us, talking to us. Sometimes they annoying us in a way of any time of the day or night. So I think it's not a bad idea to write a letter to the minister. And Minister Carroll knows the area well and I think it's a must for us to write a letter to them. And I support that notice of motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor David. Do I have any other speakers for this notice of motion? Councillor Tarkos?
I'd like to support councillor Headitch's notice of motion for, especially for pointing out the lack of consistency around noise impact criteria and that it needs a thorough investigation and parity across the board from the EPA. Just like our experience with aviation noise, we need proper expert international evidence-based research provided to us by the Department of Transport to assess the impacts of noise and how it sets up its regulatory framework. Because we need assurance to our community that their health and wellbeing is not impacted by adverse noise pollution levels. I fully endorse councillor Headitch's notice of motion. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other speakers for this notice of motion? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. An excellent notice of motion councillor Headitch. All right, the next notice of motion? All right, the next notice of motion is thirteen point three, strengthening creating better parks policy, planning and priority setting. Councillor Headige, this is your notice of motion, would you like to move it?
I would, thank you, madam mayor. The motion is that the council requests the CEO to consider, including the following key issues in the five-year review of Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan twenty sixteen. A, strengthening access and equity provisions to ensure all Brimbank suburbs are able to enjoy a full range of parks, playgrounds and open space opportunities. B, incorporating policy in creating better parks regarding like compensation for public open space losses should they occur in future. C, the criteria for using or including or excluding pocket parks in creating better parks policy and plans, introducing a long-term land acquisition policy and plan to assist with creating better parks, particularly in areas where low levels of provision is evident. D, publishing priority-setting criteria used to determine plans for implementing the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan into the future. And F, engaging actively with community again, as originally occurred and has been occurring on the way through with policy updates, to assist with co-design of a strengthened policy and planning instrument. And two, consider fast-tracking the five-year review of Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan twenty sixteen when the twenty twenty one mid-year budget review occurs, given the COVID nineteen impacts on the Brimbank community and the high value parks and public open space are providing to residents and ratepayers.
Thank you councillor Headige, do I have a second? Councillor Virginia Tarkos. Would the mover like to speak to this notice of motion?
I would, madam mayor. There has been a lot of investment in our parks and playgrounds and open spaces since the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan was first put in place over a decade ago. And it's been a fabulous investment for this community and to get all of us, congratulate all those involved for that. This NOM seeks consideration of a number of key issues that have been coming up during the life of this council in the upcoming five-year review of the policy and plan. And talking to officers, they are aware of a number of the issues, but not all of them. And there are other issues as well that they want to put forward in the Creating Better Parks review. The issues that I wish to put forward for council's consideration tonight are access and equity. Given some of the recent outcomes, there's a stronger focus needed on access and equity policy in my view, and the principles of access and equity, where everyone in each suburb has really strong access to the mix of facilities that are in the Creating Better Parks policy. And the rationale that is used for access and equity, when we discussed the August, at the August Ordinary Council meeting, the report card, it was evident there that there were a number of big projects that were put forward in stage three as flagship park initiatives. Whereas in some areas like North Sunshine, where there's been significant under-provision over many, many years, there wasn't anything coming forward. And that signaled to me and to others that there needs to be some change made to ensure that those communities that are under-provided, that are struggling to get decent access and equitable access to parks, playgrounds and open space, have improvements made as a priority. And that is the point there. Public open space, we've got RDA community currently fighting to retain two seventy four Forest Street as public open space, when other options like a road reserve and an RDA green activity hub are being proposed. There is a need for public open space to be compared as a like option with those other options in some sort of analysis that goes on through a policy framework like Creating Better Parks. So we're looking to have that sort of policy clarity come through in the Creating Better Parks policy. In the Pocket Parks area, we've got a new one going in place into West Sunshine that needs more parks, more open space. It's another area which has struggled over the years for good access. Pocket parks are valuable contributors to the parks network, but we also need to make sure that there's good safety provisions and various other things. There's a number of people who worried about the safety provisions, but down in North Sunshine, the safety provisions were a reason we didn't put a park in place in one area, along with some other reasons. And in Albion, we have sold a settlement pocket park, seven of them, that don't seem to be getting the attention they deserve as heritage area park, pocket parks. So we have a policy dilemma there as well. Land acquisition, we've had this conversation a number of times on the way through about the need to acquire land potentially in some areas, like is happening in other parts of Melbourne, where population is growing quickly and the parks network is insufficient. Other councils are buying land over time to help complement the parks networks in areas where there's under-provision. So land acquisition policy is a clear one that needs to go into the framework with consideration by the CEO, we think. Open and transparent priority-setting criteria, when all these plans get set each year and each four years, the community needs to know what the basis for their priority.
Councillor Headige, you've got one minute.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. And I guess it's a critical openness and transparency issue for Brimbank residents, knowing what the open and transparent priority-setting criteria are for the Creating Better Parks program and any other program the council might have. So, madam mayor, I put these items forward, I put this notice of motion forward to councillors on the understanding that we're requesting the CEO to consider these matters, along with a range of others the officers will have when they scope up the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan five-year review. I put this motion to councillors for their support, madam mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Headige, councillor Tarkos, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, madam mayor, I would like to endorse this notice of motion as well. If anything, this pandemic has shown us is the importance of green spaces and parks and reserves to our community, but it's also highlighted the massive disparity across Brimbank of access to those parks and spaces. People have told me that the parks, having access to parks and everything from Pocket Parks to the bigger neighbourhood parks has been an absolute godsend for their mental health, their exercise and their respite during this difficult period. Whilst speaking from a ward where we have possibly a greater and greatest access to parks within a five-kilometre radius, I fully support that we as a council examine across Brimbank and a greater effort be put into addressing the inequity of access to those green spaces and the vital role that those spaces play for our physical and mental health, especially during the pandemic. An excellent purpose as there are parts of Brimbank where we know there is a huge shortfall of parks, playgrounds and open spaces where possibly, as this NOM mentions, there's low levels. I support that our council consider acquiring land to make provision for those spaces more equitable across Brimbank. The only thing I would also add to this NOM is to look at safer access to parks, because there are some parks where there has been incidences of flooding in Sunshine and as well as in Kewal and other places, and also poor tracks, which has made it difficult for people to access those parks. So that's also something that I would like us to build into it. But I fully support and endorse your fantastic NOM, councillor Headige, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to this notice of motion? Councillor Allen?
Thanks, madam mayor. Yeah, so this notice of motion, I'm almost a hundred percent all for it. There's just one part of it that concerns me, and that's point D, introducing a long-term land acquisition policy. So my concern with that is this council, just before we walk out the door, putting that in. I think it's best if the new council makes a decision on that. I don't think it's fair on the new council to be left with that, because it's a really big deal. You know, we're talking some areas where the only way to increase the park area would be to purchase houses, which is a pretty expensive thing to do. I think because of that, it's best, I won't be voting for it, just because of that one part, so, thank you.
Any other speakers of the notice motion? Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, madam mayor. All the other councillors that have spoken, of course, speak about the value of our parks. Of course, the value of our parks is very, very important. When this park plan was first introduced, it was a very innovative plan. It did map out all of the open space that we do have in Brimbank. But the one thing that I don't understand about this motion is that we can't retrofit Brimbank to suit the needs of every single part of our community. It's almost impossible. I do agree that some parts perhaps of Brimbank don't have the open space that it should have, but that's not our fault, madam mayor. It's due to previous subdivisions, previous developers coming in and developing land and perhaps the council of the time that are asking for extra open space. I don't see how reviewing our Creating Better Parks plan right now would help in opening up areas for people that don't have the open space. It's also not in our budget allocation. We just passed a budget at the last council meeting, madam mayor. We all know as councillors how difficult that budget was for us to achieve in the sense that we've had to stretch every single dollar. So for that matter, madam mayor, I also think that perhaps the new council may have something to say. I mean, it was going to be reviewed next year anyway, in the next budget, in the next budget cycle. So what difference could possibly five or six months make? Because once the new council gets in, madam mayor, you know and all the other councillors know that as soon as the new council is elected, there's already budget talk going to be happening. So all those new councillors that get in will all have something to say about all of the policy documents that we have, not only the Creating Better Parks. So I'm sorry, madam mayor, whilst I agree with the sentiment of councillor Headige and I do understand why he's putting it forward, I can't support it this evening, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodrich, councillor Lancashire.
Thank you, madam mayor. Look, I would like to echo the sentiments of councillor Allen and councillor Judita. The parks is something we're all interested in and their development we're all interested in. However, this notice of motion, we certainly, I think, needed to have forewarning, greater research and some better understanding from the officers about the circumstances relating to it. To bring this up has left us, I think, with a proposal which could be quite detrimental to Brimbank. So we certainly should have had briefings and we haven't. Now, in terms of the impact on Brimbank, we have rate capping and we have, for our residents, achieved this year a zero rate increase. However, that means that the money that's available for community services and all the facilities, road making, everything, footpaths, that goes on, is becoming tighter and tighter. To suggest that we should spend a lot of money on acquisitions, we've seen this in the past and it hasn't worked. It's extremely expensive to buy land in an urban area and we need to think about this very carefully and have a discussion as councillors as to what services we will be foregoing to achieve the millions that you would need to spend on this land. In terms of in terms of what we should do as a priority, clearly, we should be concentrating in terms of COVID, in terms of our children, in terms of families, on putting money into the land we've got now, developing the parks we've got now. That is our highest priority under COVID, I believe, and it is also should be our priority to the immediate future. We have sports teams that have to look at sporting fields outside.
Councillor Lancashire, you've got one minute.
Thank you, madam mayor. So we have very high priorities to serve the community now, not just simply splurge on land acquisitions. So I think this is a really bad notice of motion and it requires a lot more research and we should be smart about these things and look at developing the land we've got for the maximum benefit into the immediate future. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Lancashire. Any other speakers for this notice of motion? Councillor Ball.
Thank you, madam mayor. I do acknowledge the issues raised by councillor Headige. These issues do require a review and updating of the CBP. The Creating Parks Policy and Plan two thousand and sixteen is reviewed every five years and it is to be reviewed in two thousand and twenty one, twenty two, financial year subject to council's consideration as part of the development of the council plan two thousand and twenty one, twenty five and the annual budget process for two thousand and twenty one, twenty two. It fits in with the timing of the new council. It will also include community consultation. The recently adopted council budget two thousand and twenty one and council plan, year four action plan, does not include a review of the CBP. The most appropriate mechanism to deal with the issues raised that require consideration, that are required to be in the NOM, is the review of the CBP. And for that reason, I will not support this motion.
Thank you councillor Ball. Are there any other speakers for this notice of motion? Councillor Headige, you've got a right of reply. Would you like?
Thank you. Thank you, madam mayor, and thank you councillors for your contribution. It's always good to hear what other councillors think. Can I start by saying that the notice of motion, I think, has been misrepresented in the number of the comments that have been made. The notice of motion asks the CEO to consider, including these issues, in the five-year review. It's not asking anyone to go out and buy land, it's not asking anyone to do anything at the moment, just to consider, including these issues, in the scope of the five-year review. So the comments around land acquisition and it being expensive and all the rest, but it is. But that's not the point of this NOM. This NOM is to ask the CEO, could she include that matter in the review of the plan when it comes up? I think the second point around no office of support, there is office of support for this notice of motion that was provided, and this notice of motion has been around for a while and has done the rounds of councillors a week ago. And I think to say that it doesn't have support is wrong. To also say that we need to focus on our own existing parks and land is one thing, and I agree with that. But when you've got a community that is not having proper access to parks and playgrounds and not able to enjoy the benefits, the health and wellbeing.
Councillor Headige, you've got thirty seconds.
That is a problem. And I take councillors back to the point of this. This is about the CEO simply considering these issues. The CEO can say yea or nay, that's the point of it. It's not about buying anything or doing anything and it's also asking her to consider bringing it forward because there are a whole range of issues that need sorting out. And this review will help if we can do it earlier than in six months' time. In six months' time when the mid-year review provides dollars, that would be great. So I'd ask councillors to reconsider the comments they've just made.
Councillor Headige, thank you.
Thank you very much, madam mayor.
All right, councillors, I'll put the notice of motion to a vote. All those in favour? One, two, three, four. Okay, all those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Right, the notice of motion is lost, thank you. Item nine, public question time. We've now reached the part of the
Division, madam mayor, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah.
Okay. Councillor Headige has asked for a division. Those in favour of the notice of motion, put your hand up please. Okay, so councillor John Headige, councillor Daniel Allen, councillor Virginia Tarkos and councillor Dwayne Arm Farm. Those against, hands up please. Councillor Victoria Ball, councillor Sam David, councillor Margaret Goodrich, councillor Bruce Lancashire, councillor Geneva Ziz, councillor Kim Tian Chong and councillor Georgina Papafolio. Thank you. Okay, item nine, public question time. We've now reached the We've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions as communicated through our website and to individual questionnaires. All questions received by council by 3pm on the day before the meeting that comply with the Brimbank Governance Rules 2020 will be read out and answered at this meeting and will also receive a written response. Mrs Sakurai, I understand we have received questions from the public this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first question is from Jamie Ramsey. The question is, the state landfill levy is a state-based levy collected from the dumping to landfill and held by the state government to be used in environmental remediation projects. Given the high level of contribution to this fund through dumping within Brimbank, did this council apply either directly to the state government or to Natalie Sulliman as the local state representative for this fund to be used to pay for the remediation cost to Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project? If not, why?
Thank you for your question, Jamie. Council conducted an extensive public campaign asking the state and federal governments to save the Upper Stony Creek Transformation Project. The campaign included details of the significant contributions Brimbank makes to the state's Sustainability Fund through the landfill levy contributions and sought funding to address remediation issues and complete the original vision of the project. Council presented all the priorities around our campaign to all stakeholders concerned, including local parliamentarians, relevant ministers, project partners and even travelled to Canberra to meet with relevant federal government members and officers.
The second question also from Mr Jamie Ramsey. Why did this council decide to choose Northumberland Reserve for the upgrade in Sunshine North over Somerset Reserve, given Somerset Reserve is four times bigger and an area identified as lacking resources by council?
Thank you. Somerset Reserve is known as Rusec Reserve in council's Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan and is classified as a suburban park. Council has already invested around $300,000 to create this suburban park at this location in Sunshine North. Northumberland Road Reserve is currently classified as a neighbourhood park in council's Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan. The upgrade of Northumberland Road Reserve in 2020-21 will increase the facility and functionality of this reserve to a suburban park level. Thank you.
Next question from T Nguyen. At a time most people are struggling to pay rates, how much of ratepayers' money was spent on securing the Matildas bid for Sidham Park by this council led by the mayor?
Thank you, T. Brimbank's expression of interest for the home of Matildas bid was developed, submitted and advanced, fully utilising existing council resources and budget. The time was considerably shortened as all information required was readily available after being developed for the Sidham Park Master Plan. While Brimbank was unfortunately unsuccessful in securing the home of Matildas, the expression of interest process helped to highlight the investment and strategic opportunities associated with the Sidham Park Master Plan in terms of indigenous heritage, conservation, sport and active recreation opportunities. Council will continue to advance the Sidham Park Master Plan accordingly.
Next question from T Nguyen. Does any councillor know the source of the anonymous letters used in the justification of having councillor Virginia Tarkos attend a COVID-19 test?
Thank you, T. This matter has previously been responded to by council. Thank you.
Question from Trevor Gilnik. Recently, the shared user path was delivered from Mariborong City Council's temple to Temple Path to River Valley Estate, which is great mix. However, the heritage listed Solomon's Ford Rock Crossing was not linked up. To me, this is dangerous as there is no way council is going to stop people crossing the river when the water level is low enough to cross this natural historical they have been doing for 150 years. To leave dirt access, meaning when wet, people will have muddy shoes, is more of a hazard. Can council please ensure Solomon Ford is connected to the new shared user path?
Sorry about that. Thank you for your question, Trevor. I've been advised that a connection from the shared user path to Solomon's Ford is not planned as it is not a formal and approved crossing point. Council officers are reviewing options for signage for Solomon's Ford, advising residents of approved crossing points. A crossing point does exist further downstream, near Midway Golf Course, and a new pedestrian bridge is due to be constructed further upstream by the River Valley Estate developer, providing the appropriate connection to the shared user path in the city of Moonee Valley. Thank you.
The next question also from Trevor Gilnik. Can you please car parking on Burke Street for people that want to use the Duke Street Playground, go to the temple or want to walk down to the new shared user pace development group have just opened along the river?
Thank you for your question, Trevor. I'm advised that on-street parking exits on Duke Street adjacent to the Duke Street Suburban Park providing access to the park. In relation to your request for additional on-street parking on Burke Street, I will refer this request to council's traffic and transport team for investigation and request that responses provided to you once the investigation is completed. Thank you, Trevor.
Question from Penelope Webb. With regard to his September 2020 update to council on the planned removal of two level crossings in the Deer Park Rail Corridor, would the director for infrastructure and city services amend his assertion that there are no community and regulatory risks identified when environmental, financial and safety risks of the planned road over rail at Fitzgerald Road are acknowledged in his report?
Thank you for your question, Penelope. I'm advised that council report analysis section details the key issues and risks that this project will have on how the community uses this space into the future and how the proposed new infrastructure integrates with the local area. In relation to regulatory risks on all requirements will be required to be managed by the level crossing removal project team, given this is a state government project. Thank you.
Next question also from Penelope Webb. With regards to the director for infrastructure and city services' September 2020 update to council on the planned removal of two level crossings in the Deer Park Rail Corridor, we ask whether, given his recommendation that an arterial road be introduced into a creekside environment and the lack of clarity regarding fundamental implications of the impact of the road over rail design of Fitzgerald Road, there is any reason for the community to feel that the director is representing its best interests in discussions with the level crossing removal project?
Council's response to the Fitzgerald Road level crossing removal is based on council's adopted urban design principles which seek the best outcome for the community, the environment and council assets, regardless of which option is delivered by the level crossing removal project. Thank you, Penelope, for your two questions.
Question from Lisa Dallymore on behalf of Sex Work Law Reform Victoria. On 21 May 2019, council resolved to engage independent investigators to allow council to actively investigate alleged legal brothel establishments by managing the issue in-house. Since 21 May 2019, how much money has council spent paying independent investigators or the employers who hire such investigators to investigate suspected illegal brothels?
Thank you for your question, Lisa. Where independent investigators were used to investigate the seven illegal establishments prosecuted to date, council has paid approximately $12,110 to the employers who hired these investigators. However, as council has been successful in prosecuting these premises, the magistrate has ordered that council's costs be paid. This has resulted in the investigators' fees being recoverable. Thank you.
The next question also from Lisa Dallymore. Can council guarantee that since 21 May 2019, independent investigators paid for, by council to investigate suspected illegal brothels have not engaged in sexual activities with sex workers inside suspected illegal brothels?
Thank you, Lisa. Where independent investigators were used to investigate the seven illegal establishments prosecuted to date, the independent investigators undertook activities necessary for the purpose of gathering evidence. Thank you, everyone, for your questions this evening. Okay. Okay, we move on to item 10 petitions. There are no petitions to be received this evening. Item 11, minutes and reports of special committees. There are no minutes or reports of special committees. Item 12, officer reports. There are 12 officer reports for consideration by council tonight. Councillors, due to time constraints, I will not be granting extensions of speaking times for this meeting and councillors are limited to two questions of clarification in relation to any motion. Also, before we consider report 12.1, the governance report, I would like to invite Mr Jeff Harry, who is the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee for council, to address the council and provide an update on behalf of the committee. So welcome, Jeff Harry. Other is? Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I've been asked to effectively give you an update on the activities of the audit committee, your audit and risk committee for the last year. We recently had a meeting where we signed off on the financial statements for the year ended 30th of June 2020. So it's a natural point when that's concluded to reflect on the activities of the committee for the year and to report to you. So I know that you've received a copy of the report that I prepared dated the 4th of September 2020. I don't propose to read that document, but I am going to refer to it in a few comments I'd like to make because I think there's some information that might help just refresh councillors on the workings of the committee and on the work that we've done for the year. So I'll be brief, Madam Mayor, and I'm happy to take questions at the end. So the first thing to say about the Audit and Risk Committee at Brimbank City Council is that it's a supporting function for councillors. Essentially, it deals with matters of financial management, reporting, audit, risk management and so on. It's a supporting function to council and serves council. So it's important that we comply with our charter, the responsibilities that are set out in the charter, that charter having been prepared and updated from time to time by council. Look, essentially, the charter requires that we review financial reports prepared by council that at the end of the year and at other times during the year, that we keep an oversight on the audit functions, both internal and external audit functions, that we facilitate communication amongst auditors, the city's financial team and officers, that we monitor the soundness of the council's systems of internal control, that we monitor council's performance on compliance matters, that we monitor council's performance on risk management and that we monitor fraud and corruption matters that may arise from time to time. So essentially, much of our work really draws us towards ethical standards and the promotion thereof, which we do and we consider that at all of our meetings. During the year, the committee met independently of management with both the external auditors, who are essentially the Victorian Auditor General, and our internal auditors, who council has appointed NTT, previously Oakton. They changed names during the year. We've also had our eye on matters to do with compliance and governance around information, communication and technology, environmental matters, the adequacy of council's insurances and the best practice and compliance with best practice corporate governance processes. I can say quite clearly that the committee has enjoyed strong commitment from all parties in the workings of the committee. And I mean from councillors, from officers, the CEO, from the external and internal auditors and also from the independent members of the committee whom you appoint. So there's very strong support for the work of the committee and that makes it able to be more effective in its work. We've also had excellent attendance during the year from all members of the committee. And in fact, we've had two or three councillors attend various of our meetings during the year who are not members of the committee. And we've welcomed that and we ask that if you have an interest going forward. I know there's about to be elections, but going forward, you would always be welcome to attend and observe if you wanted to do so. During the year, council approved changes to the audit charter of the committee. Sorry, the Audit Committee, Audit and Risk Committee Charter. We do that as a regular improvement step, but also we have a new Local Government Act in place, which has rung in many changes, some of which will impact the work of the committee and that will unfold as we go forward. We have an annual work plan that we work to, to ensure that we don't miss anything when we're looking at the charter and making sure that we cover off all of our responsibilities. In terms of our internal audit, we have engaged NTT under contract to deliver our internal audit services. And for the year ended 30th of June 2020, NTT have been active, as we would expect. And they now connect directly with the Financial Services Department, which took responsibility for the support of the committee since 21 February this year. NTT senior people have attended all meetings and have engaged with us constructively and positively, which we appreciate. The Internal Audit Programme that we approved a year ago has been delivered and the new plan is underway as we speak. The review, the plan last year, the year ended 30th of June 2020, included six internal audit reviews. They are listed in the report, Madam Mayor. I won't go into the detail, but they have all been completed. Some of them indicated work needs to be done for further improvement and we did have one or two reviews where essentially there were no major items found, which was pleasing to see. We do, every meeting, make sure that there's progress being made on the implementation of agreed actions arising from internal audit reports. And it's pleasing to note that the team at council keeps on top of these and I believe we don't have any major items that are hugely out of date. So that's a good sign as well. The external audit, which I mentioned earlier, is an audit done annually on the city's financial statements. And the 30th of June 2020 audit was done by agents of the Victorian Auditor General, DFK Kidsons, who attended their last meeting. DFK Kidsons, who attended their last meeting two weeks ago and delivered their report on the financial statements for the year ended 30th of June 2020. There were no major issues, but as is usual, there were a few points of suggested improvement, and they've been picked up by the finance team, and the Audit Committee will monitor the progress on those over the coming months. Then moving down, the committee has also been involved in monitoring council's performance on risk management. We focus on strategic risk. We focus on areas where council's exposures on risk are considered to be higher than we would like. It won't surprise you if I say that, obviously, in the current environment, it's a concern that we watch closely because of the impact of COVID-19 and the fact that we've got a number of elevated risks, similar to most councils in the state, I might add. But certainly, risks around financial management, IT, security and effectiveness, and delivery of council's strategic objectives are all the big ticket items that have been impacted by COVID-19, and they will continue to be next year as well. We received an excellent report from the CEO last meeting on the high level points regarding COVID-19's impact, and I'm sure we'll hear about that again. I've also listed in the report other work that we did during the year outside the internal audit plan and the external audit, work around monitoring the Business Continuity Management Programme, insurance renewals, information, communication and technology security updates, which are hugely important areas for council. We also conducted near the end of last year a performance, a self-assessment of our performance. And we did make changes to the survey to tailor it to suit council more specifically. I won't go into the details here, but what I will say, both from my specific experience here and in many other councils I work with, I will say that the outcomes of that review, that self-assessment, were very positive. And we also not only had the members of the committee responding to the survey, but also senior officers to try and broaden out just the sense of how people do see our performance. So that was very encouraging, but as I say to every meeting, to those in attendance, we're always keen to improve. So we're always happy to take on any suggestions for improvement. My final point is to thank everyone that's been involved or supported the committee for the year. I've enjoyed my role over the years chairman, and I look forward to the new year. I look forward to being able to see all of you again next year after the elections, and I wish you well in the elections. I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Sorry, I was talking to myself again. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for attending this evening. Look, although I wasn't an official committee member, I did attend some of the meetings. So on behalf of the committee, I would like to say thank you. I know the committee greatly appreciated your support, your expertise, and also the advice you have provided to them. So councillors, are there any questions for Jeff? No? Okay, brilliant. Wonderful work. Thank you for attending this evening again.
Okay. Good evening, councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, councillors, we will now move to report 12.1 Governance Report, September 2020. Mr Hogan. Would you like to present this report, please?
Is a standing item within the all council meeting agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and governance principles. Within compliance with provisions applying respectively in the Local Government Act of 1989 and the New Local Government Act of 2020, report variously informs council delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions, or seeks relevant decision for action. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Mayor, rather a lengthy recommendation, I might add, as printed in the business papers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Goodrich. Do I have a second, though? Councillor Lancashire? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few brief words. This falls under my portfolio of innovation, which does include governance and property. And I'd like to highlight the importance of the monthly governance report. It does point out to the community all the activities of the council for that month. It does include regular items such as delegations, records of assemblies, MP meetings. And this month does also include a Heritage Advisory Committee recommendation, which I maybe Councillor Lancashire would like to speak to, so I won't do that. Community consultation on the proposed Glengala Pocket Park and also Evergreen Reserve. And it also does include, Madam Mayor, the Audit Risk Committee annual report, which Mr Jeff Harry just spoke to. An excellent chairman, I have to say, Madam Mayor. We have wonderful meetings, and I've attended every meeting, believe it or not. I do like those meetings. I do enjoy going to the meetings. To a lot of people, maybe Audit and Risk may be a little dry, but I've really, really learned to like the meetings, and I would urge every councillor present, obviously not the present ones because this council is almost over, but on the next new councillor, I would urge all the councillors to at least serve one year or come along to a couple of the meetings to fully understand the inner workings of council and how diligent the community representatives and officers are to ensure that there is full accountability in every department of our council. And that's why it's important, Madam Mayor. It's an extremely good thing to know that every department of council is accountable to our community, to our taxpayers, and that's why it's important that all councillors would have an opportunity to serve on this committee. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recommend the report to the council.
Well said, Councillor Goodrich. Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, the Governance Report reports on a number of committees, and one of those is the Heritage Advisory Committee. And as Chair of that committee, it's appropriate that I comment on the work of that committee, which has a particular item in the recommendation which I'm supporting. On the 1st of September 2020, the Heritage Advisory Committee held a special meeting to discuss the bulk grain store buildings at Two Wright Street Sunshine, known as the Sunshine Silos. The meeting included an update on council's preliminary heritage investigations, which were commissioned to determine if the Sunshine Silos have heritage values. The investigations are currently unable to be completed due to COVID-19 restrictions that have limited access to heritage information. The Hack Committee discussed the importance of this work and the options available to council. It was a recommendation of this committee, the Advisory Committee, that council writes to the Minister for Planning, the Honourable Richard Wynn, MP, advising that the bulk grain store buildings located at Two Wright Street Sunshine are a significant urban landmark within the city of Brimbank, especially for the Sunshine community. Also advising that preliminary heritage investigations are underway by council but are unable to be completed due to COVID-19 restrictions, limiting access to the historical records, including those held by the Public Records Office. In addition, highlighting the importance of the preliminary heritage investigations and the need to complete this work post-lifting of COVID-19 restrictions to inform council about the site's heritage values. In addition, highlighting
One minute.
Thank you. Highlighting that Two Wright Street Sunshine is currently zoned industrial, is part of the Sunshine National Employment and Innovation Cluster, and previously identified as part of the Western State Significant Industrial Precinct, and is now considered local industrial land in the Melbourne Industrial and Commercial Land use plan. And finally, requesting intervention from the minister to protect the bulk grain store buildings located in Wright Street from demolition until heritage investigations are complete. I would like to recommend that part, and in fact, the whole recommendation in the Governance Report to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well said, Councillor Lancashire. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to point out that the Governance Report also include a report about the Brimbank Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Consultative Committee, which met on the 26th of August via Zoom. We had a very full-on agenda, as the previous meeting in June was cancelled through COVID. Some highlights of the meeting were an update was provided regarding Reconciliation Week. An update was also provided regarding NADOC Week that is going to be held from the 8th to the 15th of November. The community was also informed about the Australian Institute of Landscape Award with regards to the Sunvale Community Park. Council would like to thank Leanne Clark and Mandy Burton for creating the artworks and under the guidance of Wurundjeri elders. A yarn about how the community is faring was also conducted with regards to COVID-19. An update was also provided about the Kuri homework support, which is now taking place virtually. There are students who are missing out because of lack of resources. However, council staff are looking into it by working with the VAEAI Kuri Outreach Programme. And there was also a very robust discussion, and the community felt that they wanted to have another meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Any other speakers for this report? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too like to say a few words about the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct. Thank you. Council, as we all know, the invited expression of interest for membership for the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee. And council received 19 expressions of business, a nice number, very good number indeed, Madam Mayor. The council selection panel comprised of myself, the Chief Executive Officer, and the Director of City Development, met on the 27th of July to review and appoint members, which was reported to the ordinary council meeting on the last meeting, on the 18th of August, Madam Mayor. The council selection panel have made a further appointment to the Brimbank Industrial Precinct Committee for the Sunshine Group, which is located in the precinct. The Sunshine Group, Madam Mayor, is one of the second land owner of the precinct, and it was to do with Tom Bachson. His family has a history there for about 80 years. He recently decided to retire because he was part of the previous committee at council, and he suggested his son. And his son is, to me, has already scrupled credentials and everything to do with it. He grew in the precinct as a young man. He's a highly educated person, and I think he will support and benefit that meeting, the committee. The council report considered by council on the 19th of May indicated the revised membership structure of the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee would include eight or more business operators or property owners in the precinct, while the attached terms of reference indicated any industry nominated representatives of property owners from the precinct. The intent is clear in that council report that additional business operators and property owners beyond eight can be considered, and is recommended that a correction be made to the terms of reference to address what is considered to be an administrative error. The connected terms of reference define attachment number five, Madam Mayor. So, look, we had our last meeting, last
You've got 30 seconds, Commissioner.
30 seconds, yeah. We had a last meeting on last Thursday, and it was a happy meeting, Madam Mayor. Those people enjoyed speaking to council officers and between them. They spoke with one voice, and they spoke very, very morale in reference to the community across the road of Geelong Road, I'm referring to the Brooklyn community. So I'm looking forward to an extremely good meeting.
Councillor David, your time is up.
Christian, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to hear that there's one voice and united committees. Thank you, Councillor David. Okay, any other speakers for this report? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to talk about the Heritage Advisory Committee report that's here tonight. And given that we had an issue last council meeting, a nom was voted down on this matter. It's great to see Councillor Lancashire chairing the Heritage Advisory Committee now supporting this, and it's great to see the information that's come forward from the Advisory Committee, which is a number of local people providing advice back to council. And it's great that that's been heard. I'm really pleased that we are now writing as a council to the minister seeking intervention to place a protection order across the grain stores, Two Wright Street, to protect them from demolition should they be sold and a new owner seeks that outcome. There is a process to go through, as Councillor Lancashire has said, around the council doing its work and determining the site's heritage values, but that's all stalled at the moment. So it's fabulous to see the Heritage Advisory Committee performing its function, giving advice to council on this, that we should proceed with writing to the minister after having decided not to last month. So congratulations, Councillor Lancashire, on chairing the committee and bringing forward this recommendation to council. Congratulations to all the councillors who I anticipate will support this as it goes forward. Thank you very much.
Excellent feedback. Thank you, Mr Hiddich. Any other councillors to speak on this report? I'll put the officer recommendations forward for voting, those in favour against Kerry. Thank you. All right. Item 12.2, Brimbank Coronavirus or COVID-19 Response and Recovery Strategy Progress Report. I'll ask Miss Temple to introduce this, and then I've got a mayoral update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider noting the progress made towards implementation of the Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy for the reporting period of the 1st to the 31st of August 2020. The Brimbank Community Impact Analysis is also presented at attachment two for council noting. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Temple. Councillors, before I give you the opportunity to ask any questions or if there's any points of clarification, I'll read my report, and then you can ask some questions. Okay, "As the last official council meeting before the caretaker period, I believe it is appropriate to reflect on council's advocacy work, and which I have had the pleasure to lead this year as mayor. I am proud to report that council has helped secure over $75 million towards local projects, programmes and initiatives to support our community, including over $40 million in state support for local businesses in response to COVID, $8 million through Working for Victoria to employ 165 local residents, $8 million for Ballarat Road and Shoolat Street intersection $8 million for Ballarat Road and Shoolat Street intersection upgrades. 5.5 million for Victoria University Brimbank Socioeconomic Research. $4 million in state funding towards Moor Park redevelopment stage one and two in Harvest Ward. $2 million for the new health and wellbeing hub. $2 million for Green Gully Road, Rundle Road and Calder Freeway interchange. 1.13 million in federal COVID financial assistance. $950,000 for local water projects, including Upper Stony Creek and Dempster Park. $675,000 for local Pocket Park projects, including in Sunshine and Cairnleigh. $625,000 for local sports projects, including Errington and Delahaye redevelopments. $500,000 for Keelaw Park Reserve redevelopment and female-friendly change rooms project. $320,000 for a changemakers multicultural sport program. $200,000 to provide 24 local young people with jobs through Brimpack program. $82,000 from DJPR for a West of Melbourne social procurement project. $50,000 COVID Community Connected Grant. These outcomes are also on top of council's other key advocacy wins, which have included advocating for expansions of the Jobkeeper, Jobseeker and Business Support Programs, advocating for local suburban and rapid response COVID teams, solidifying the airport rail link via the Sunshine Priority Precinct, fast tracking of the Robinsons Road and Fitzgerald Road level crossings projects, securing an EPA office in Sunshine. Councils stop the, stop the soil advocacy with Melton Council to prevent Westgate Tunnel Saw being sent to Ravenhall. Having the Sidnum Park Matilda's bid shortlisted. Strategic relationships, including an MOU with Victoria University and Life Saving Victoria. These are all significant advocacy outcomes that we should all acknowledge and reflect on. However, despite all of these recent outcomes, we know that our community will need more than ever before to respond, recover and rebuild from COVID. That is why I am proud of the 19-point advocacy plan for COVID recovery that we endorsed last month and which provides the clear pathway for the federal government, the state government and non-government sectors to partner with council to help us rebuild as we head to the October budget window and beyond. I thank all councillors, council staff, our local parliamentarians, stakeholders and community partners for their support and advocacy throughout the year. Thank you, everyone. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification for Ms. Dumble? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Allen? A sec. Would you like to mention the recommendations, councillor Allen?
As printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor David, thank you. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak to this report?
Just to say how grateful we are to the council officers in support for extraordinary funding that's coming our way.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor David, would you like to say a few words?
No, Madam Mayor, but wonderful words by councillor Allen. Well said, very good.
Thank you. Councillor Hiddich? Councillor Hiddich, we can't hear you.
Apologies. Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to congratulate the officers. There's a long list of achievements here and funding isn't easy to get and some of those big ticket items for jobs and things like that have been part of big statewide programs and congratulate the officers for their submissions. The quality of their submissions has obviously been high and they've done the job and I think project after project you mentioned there have occurred. There's also been some great initiatives that have come from long-term work around, you know, the EPA office coming to this area. It's been sought for a number of years, there's been notices of motion, other things put forward. So a big effort by many, many people and congratulations to all involved. It's good that it's happened.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other councillors that would like to make some comments? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item 12.3, Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decisions, August 2020. I invite Mr. Walsh to present this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with the status of planning permit application and trends in, in planning approvals in Brimbank and also to provide council with decisions made under delegated authority during August 2020 regarding planning permit applications and other matters. Officers recommend that council notes the planning activity update and the decisions which are outlined at attachment one to this report.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
I move, thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Aziz? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there are a couple of very significant things which build on the comments you've made about the $75 million in grants that we've received. When you look at our cost of development applications compared to last year, which was 90 million, to this year is 100 million. The combination of these two things, I think, is very important to the city of Brimbank in moving forward and particularly as we try and pull out of the, of the COVID situation and get the economy going and the local economy going. So again, that's 75 million in grants plus the 100 million just in this month alone and this has been occurring month after month where we've been doing well. Gives our community, I think, some confidence that we will be doing our best to try and pull out of the economic situation that COVID has put us in. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I recommend this officer's recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor Lancashire. Our officers have definitely worked extremely hard the last six months. And, oh, sorry, who was the second? Councillor Aziz, sorry. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just looking at this, as councillor Lancashire said, it looks really good and looks very promising. So thank you to everyone that's been involved in the offices. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Aziz. All right, any other speakers for this report? Councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate the officers on putting forward this particular report month after month, year after year. One of the observations is that we started off in the first year of this council and things have, the planning applications have tailed off gradually each year. But the one, one, one constant in all of this is that Harvest Award has been leading the charge all the way through and this time again with the big number of planning applications coming through Harvest Award. What that reflects is a mix of industrial and residential applications, which is great. We need, we need both. We need the investment in industry and jobs and we need the investment in, in housing stock and, and densification. But it also brings with it the reminder, Madam Mayor, that we had the creating better parks issue before, that this part of town is not well supplied with parks and other things. So this planning report provides us an indication of the extremely busy consolidation of this area with not a whole lot of other infrastructure around it. And I would like to remind councillors of that going forward, that you need to have your eye on both balls, not just the planning ball when these sort of things are coming. What are the implications of this? And the implications are very strong in terms of new outcomes needed, new investment needed in the ward and around the different suburbs. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other speakers for this officer recommendation? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. 12.4, Application P573/2019 for Approval of a Development Plan for 80 Harvester Road, Sunshine. I ask Mr. Walsh, could you present this report, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an assessment of application P573/2019 for a proposed development plan at Sunshine Marketplace, which is located at 80 Harvester Road in Sunshine. And this assessment is against the provisions of the Brimbank Planning Scheme. Officers recommend that council approves the Sunshine Marketplace Development Plan and the associated transport impact assessment and review as shown at attachment three. And the council notifies all parties who lodged a submission that council has approved the Sunshine of the development plan and associated appendices.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification, Mr. Hiddich?
No, no points of clarification. No points of clarification, Madam Mayor. I was going to move the motion.
Before we move the motion, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, Mr. Hiddich, would you like to move the motion, please?
I'd like to move an amended motion, Madam Mayor. That includes a minor amendment, a part C.
What's the point of order, councillor Lancashire? We can't hear you. Sorry.
I'm just concerned that it was stated that it was moving the motion and then it was changed to an amended motion.
Apologies, Madam Mayor, that's correct. I did say that, but I am proposing to move an amended motion at this point in time and that's been circulated to councillors for some time.
Yeah. Councillor Lancashire, I'll accept that. Thank you. Okay. So councillor Hiddich, would you like, could we share the screen, please, with the amended motion? Okay, councillors?
Councillor, councillors, the motion that I'm putting forward is as per the business papers for A and B, approving the Sunshine Marketplace Development Plan and B notifying all parties who lodged a submission that council has approved the plan. C though, is an addition relating to the conversation we had at the planning forum with the developer, that we request the owner of the Sunshine Marketplace to engage in a regular and ongoing way with the local community and council itself about the outcomes of their ongoing place management investigations and research, recognizing the indigenous cultural heritage of the area, the multicultural settlement heritage of the area, the HV Mackay industrial heritage of the site and the nationally important industrial relations heritage of the site, which we know around town as the Harvester Judgment. Two, evaluating and innovative architectural designs for the new built form. And three, the sustainable quality landscaping for the site and its different spaces. And D and E are as per the original motion. So a minor amendment, Madam Mayor. I commend it to councillors.
Okay, councillor Hiddich, thank you. Do I have a second for this amended motion?
A second.
Councillor David? Okay. Sam David, yeah? All right. Councillor Hiddich? Would you like to speak to your amended motion?
I would, Madam Mayor, just briefly. I think we've, we've seen the development plan from Vicinity slash Challenger, the developer, and we've all been impressed by that stage one plan. We've had a great conversation with him the other night and we've had some further information provided to us in a confidential way about placemaking and landscaping and that has been great to see. This particular part C adds to that and requests that the Sunshine Marketplace owner engages in a regular and ongoing way with the local community and council about the ongoing placemaking work that they're doing and keeping the community informed and linked into that and the council informed and linked into that as we go through acknowledging the significant site that they're sitting on. This HV Mackay Harvester site has enormous cultural and heritage value, both to the indigenous people back when Stanley Creek ran through it and ever since with the multicultural settlement of the area and the Mackay factory being there for so long and being such a, a known feature of not just Sunshine, but the whole of Australia is one of the biggest manufacturing plants in the world and in agricultural production and so on. And one of the really big issues that doesn't get mentioned much around the place or enough around the place is the nationally important Harvester Judgment that was made by the, the well-known Justice Higgins back in 1903, after he received a list of requests from the wives of the workers who put on paper the costs of rent and feeding their families and clothing their families so that a living wage could be created for the first time in Australia and in the world. And this is not only a nationally important industrial heritage, relations heritage site, but internationally as well. And I guess the other key thing was that we've seen some designs coming forward that are very nifty, have the wow factor. We keep talking about the need for architectural design guidelines. We've done it for four years at this council and we're still waiting. I'm glad to, I'm putting forward this, this notice of motion to encourage Vicinity to keep putting forward the great designs they're putting forward and sharing it with community and the same with the landscaping. We're always looking for great quality landscaping around the city and on this side in particular, given its enormous value and its, its uses that will come. Quality landscaping is so important and we, we've been talking about landscaping guidelines as well for activity centers going forward. It'd be great to see them come out of council eventually, but in this case, we're relying on the Sunshine Marketplace to keep us informed about what they're proposing to do and keep, keep the community and council in the loop on that and all the different spaces they're going to put that into as well. So that is the basis of the notice of motion, asking the marketplace owners to keep in touch with community and council about these things and how they're going to make this place a wonderful place over time. It will take some time, but that's the point of it. And to keep in, keep in the back of mind the need for that architectural wow factor around Sunshine and Brimbank and also that really great landscaping that really sets off really good quality designs and, and developments. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I commend the amended notice of motion to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I second the, the motion by councillor Hiddich because it's very small changes and I think if one want to keep some history of the previous manufacturer there, if we refer any further to HV Mackay and the judge Higgins at the time, it's a must for us to try and achieve can bring something back. Those who remember the previous library in Sunshine where our civic center is now, it's built to that way. It was built to the history of the former Harvester. So I think it's a must for us to encourage them to come up and, and present something similar to that era. It's a history. Sunshine got that history. No other, no other place in Australia's got that. And, and we have to be seen that we're supporting that. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Councillor David, do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Tarkos?
I'd also like to endorse the amendment. I think that the vicinity project has got the potential to be one of the biggest draw cards for the city of Brimbank and the cultural heritage that, of the HV Mackay heritage that should be woven and integrated into the project. And I'd like to see the history of the, the decision, as John mentioned, told through maybe a visual mural throughout the city so that people understand that the eight-hour decision was made in Sunshine through the Harvester works. So I, I, I think that if we're looking at, at it, we need So I think that if we're looking at it, we need to think big and Vicinity have got an opportunity of a lifetime to develop a drawcard for the whole of the Brimbank and possibly the West, being the heart of the West. And I commend this amendment that emphasises that they look into the heritage and discuss that and integrate that more into their future planning. Thank you.
Okay, councillors, are there any other speakers? Councillor Lancashire?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My first exposure to this project, at least in a concept form, came over a year ago at the State Planning Conference. And it was fairly exciting to be a participant at that conference to see this exciting proposal come up from Vicinity, at least back then as a concept form. Then it was quite clearly being touted to the planners across the state as being an exciting development for Sunshine in Melbourne's West. And that, and I'd also like to thank very much the work since then because there is an enormous amount of work in translating it from a broad concept into the more detailed work that we have before us now in terms of the concept. The proposal I particularly like is being less car reliant as a centre with a transport super hub, improving in pedestrian and cyclist experience in the area, where you will come to there by foot, bike, train or bus. The encouragement of future development to include sustainable measures by the developer, water sensitive urban design and tree planting. All of these things, I think, are a new start for Sunshine and Business Centre and a very exciting opportunity. We've all as councillors walked out there into the car park and felt we should and could have more. And this is a great start to it all. So in that basis, I'd be supporting it. And I think retention of the heritage elements being put forward is also valuable. What we can keep of the past is quite good. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Goodie-Chair, you had your hand up before.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo the sentiments of all my fellow councillors. And I have to say, Madam Mayor, that since the Airport Rail Link was announced that it would come through Sunshine, I think the councillors were expecting that there would be investments of millions of dollars from various developers. Vicinity, of course, have been waiting quite some time to see their plans and now at least we have a development plan in front of us. And I'd like to actually thank councillor Headitch for bringing it back to what the community have told us all along, that they don't mind that there's millions of dollars of investment here in Sunshine, but we do have to balance it out with our heritage and the history of Sunshine as well. With the Justice Higgins judgment, when I was mayor in 2007, Madam Mayor, in the Visi Hub when it was opened, they actually reenacted that whole judgment. And the people at the time dressed in period dress, they dressed as they would have at the time. And a lot of our longstanding community members, I can't mention them all now, actually were the characters. I have to say, Madam Mayor, that it was probably one of the most memorable things that I have ever, ever witnessed. It was absolutely amazing. And I often wonder if there's anything in our, perhaps in our comms department that has filmed any of that, because it would be really nice if it was captured on film. I'm not quite sure. But that's, that's basically the history of Sunshine. I mean, that case was renowned right over the world. So thank you to councillor Headitch for that amendment and I certainly will be supporting this development plan. It's a really good news story for Sunshine and indeed the West. Thank you.
Well said, councillor Goodie-Chair. Any other speakers for this recommendation or the amendment, sorry? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. This is the amended officer recommendation by councillor Headitch. All those in favour, against carried. Okay. We're up to item 12.5, Brimbank Planning Scheme Amendment C212BRIM, Sunshine Landfills. And I ask Mr Walsh to present this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amendment 212BRIM proposes to apply the environmental audit overlay to potentially contaminated land associated with and adjoining the closed Sunshine landfills. The public exhibition of this amendment was completed on the 8th of August 2020. This report is for council to consider the submissions to the amendment and to authorise council officers to prepare council submissions to the planning panel hearing and negotiate the resolution of matters between council and submitters and a range of other procedural matters associated with the panel hearing. Councillor also advised that a further report would be presented to a future ordinary council meeting on the findings and recommendations of the planning panel. Council officers recommend that council note and consider the 11 submissions to the amendment and these are in attachment one, confirms referral of all submissions to the planning panel and confirms that any late submissions received about the amendment between the date of this report and this council meeting and the panel hearing would be referred to the planning panel. It also, officers also recommend that council delegates authority necessary to represent council at the panel and receives a further report to the findings and recommendations of the panel, planning panel, once that is issued. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification for Mr Walsh? Okay, do I have a mover for this recommendation? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this recommendation? Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to this recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This amendment has been ongoing for us over the last four years. And in fact, it dates back to events running over decades. As a town planner that's worked in councils, I can say that getting an environmental audit overlay over sites that are contaminated is an accepted standard practice in planning to ensure that people purchasing properties in those areas are aware of that contamination and any impacts it may have on the developments. So I'd like to say the, while it was unfortunate and difficult for council coming into this particular problem and finding it, my compliments go into two areas. And that is first of all, the staff that have worked tirelessly over this four years to get this amendment up to a stage where it's now going, it's been on exhibition and it's going to panel. And also for the council in pursuing to fix this problem and ensure that there is an environmental audit overlay over this land. So congratulations to the staff for their hard work and also congratulations to my fellow councillors in aiming to address this problem from the past. So on that basis, I would certainly recommend the recommendation that is put forward by the officers to my fellow councillors. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Well said, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few words. The fact that it's going to a panel, Madam Mayor, might seem like a negative thing. I don't consider it to be negative. I think it's a very positive thing in the sense that the residents will have another opportunity to resolve issues and to present to the panel, an independent panel at that. But I must say, Madam Mayor, that when we were first briefed about this, we all expected that, oh my God, you know, the media exposure and how bad is it going to be? But the fact, Madam Mayor, that it's ended the way that it has and every single homeowner or landowner there has been consulted with and every single person has given us feedback is only a testament, Madam Mayor, to our staff and Mr Walsh and his team and all of the legal team and everyone involved, including us as councillors, in understanding exactly what was going on down there, Madam Mayor. So I'm really happy that it's much clearer now. It is not as bad as we initially thought it was going to be. And I'm happy that the panel will go ahead, Madam Mayor, so then we can get a better understanding as well. And as I said, it does provide another independent view of everything that's going on. So I commend everyone involved. Thank you.
So true. Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour, against carried. Thank you. 12.6, Proposed Planning Scheme Amendment, Tunnel Cliff Court in East Kielow. That's the Kielow Cemetery. Mr Walsh, do you mind presenting this report again? You're a busy person tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't mind at all. The purpose of this report is for council to consider providing in principle written support to the Greater Metropolitan Semataries Trust for a planning scheme amendment which proposes to rezone a portion of the Kielow Cemetery from industrial three zone to the public use zone, PUZ5. And this is shown in attachment one. Our officer or our recommendation to council is that council provides in principle written support to the Greater Metropolitan Semataries Trust for this planning scheme amendment as detailed in attachment one.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you. Yes, my question to the officer is no public consultation is taking place for this particular proposed amendment. Is that due to the fact that it's an administrative, because of the administrative nature of this amendment, planning scheme amendment? Or are there other reasons?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The amendment is a 20 part four, which is at the minister's discretion. So the minister would have been requested to undertake that amendment, you know, that process. It is by and large contained with, well, it is entirely contained within the cemetery, cemetery bounds. And for that reason, I would provide council with the advice that it is largely an administrative process.
Okay, any other questions, councillors? All right, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Sam David? Okay, would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, this rezones the site to its use of cemeteries and crematoria. Of course, it's just cemeteries. However, the, this is a regular process that occurs, bringing the planning scheme into conformity with the use of the land. So it's very procedural and I would certainly recommend it to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor David?
Just a few words from Madam Mayor. It's, yes, I believe we should have done that 10, maybe 11 years ago. We had our own committee there, council judiciary member, and we penetrated that cemetery. We done quite a number of jobs there. It's a limb and we purchased a land across the road where the new part of the cemetery is now. And also we went through with a small factory, abandoned factory, if you like, right in the corner, where we started with $300,000 and we kept going. And we forced, they forced ourselves to go and purchase it on compulsory acquisition. And it cost us $1.150,000. So I should have done that there. It would have been a lot better. I support the officer's recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor David. I just can't believe the memory that you've got. You came up with that figure. Well done. Thank you for that information, background information. Do I have any other councillors that would like to speak to this report? Okay. Put it forward to a vote. All those in favour, against carried. Thank you. All right. Item 12.7, draft submission to Melbourne Airport Environs Safeguarding Standing Advisory Committee. Mr Walsh, I invite you back. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Melbourne Airport Environs Safeguarding Standing Advisory Committee has been appointed to provide advice to the Minister for Planning on a range of matters that are detailed in the report. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft submission to the Melbourne Airport Environs Safeguarding Standing Advisory Committee as shown at attachment one. Officers recommend that council endorse the draft submission as attached but, and also note that Brimbank, Melton and Hune councils have jointly written to the Victorian Government proposing that it consider a revised process for improvements to the planning provisions safeguarding Melbourne Airport and its environments, environs, as shown at attachment four. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Tarkos? Can't hear you. Councillor Tarkos, we can't hear you.
I move the motion as per the papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second, second for this report? Councillor Allen? Would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you. I welcome the council's comprehensive submission to MESAC. A key issue raised by our submission is the planning scheme doesn't require assessment of planning permit applications against what is an extensive range of information, guidelines and other legislation that exists for airports. Important points to reference are guideline A, measures for managing impacts of aircraft noise. A N E F is not the best way to always depict areas impacted by aircraft noise and it is not always the most accurate or comprehensive understanding of the impact of noise on communities, which is supported by information from Sydney Airport, where the majority of noise complaints were outside the 20 A N E F. The N contour is the additional noise measure, which measures noise based on the frequency of noise events and the decibel measure. The N contours, however, are not included in any of the planning scheme. Therefore, there is no requirement to consider this noise measure or refer a permit application to the airport operator for comment. Madam Mayor, the feedback I've received from the community is that this process, whilst an important one for planning, is in the middle of a critical health state emergency and that the airport must consider the following. The concerns arising for many are that the most affected people are elderly and are at the very high risk of COVID-19 and would not be able to attend the November hearings. Many have English as a second language in Brimbank and not very, may not have the computer literacy, which would limit them in researching and producing a comprehensive submission. And this may mean that they are not represented in the submissions process. Elderly are also more severely impacted by noise in noise corridors and intensity. Many pre-1980 homes may also contain asbestos that could vibrate, which could also disrupt fibres below the flight path, which increase in volume and intensity. Most retirees and pensioners lack the funds to insulate their homes to currently accept acoustic levels and make asbestos safe. Their voices need to be heard as well. As a local councillor representative, I feel they need time and they need accessible information to make their submissions and their voices heard. And finally, and most importantly, schools are currently closed down under quarantine. So are completely unable to prepare their own submissions in view of the widely recognised educational harm that our, that our research, research has shown to occur with the distraction of increased aircraft noise. So, Madam Mayor, that is a concern that all these people need to be also represented in this process and hopefully the airport can take, in its consultation, take that into consideration. Thank you.
So councillor Tarkos, are you for this notice of motion? Officer recommendation or do you want an amendment made to include some of these?
I would like an amendment. I would like an amendment, if possible, reading through this feedback to possibly ask the airport that it consider an extension of the consultation period, given that schools are closed and they should be, I think, at a minimum consulted. And also for the voices of the cold community and also the the people that may not have access to computers to also consider a submission. So I'm not sure if I could add that.
Can I just have the recommendations put up on the screen again, please? So we can all look at it and review it?
Perhaps an additional point, given that I fully endorse what our submission is. But my concern is that there is a lot of voices that are left out in this process. And that the hearings are in November, I believe. So it doesn't give people a lot of time to prepare.
Okay, so.
Are there any consequences?
Sorry?
Sorry.
I'm just speaking to councillor Tarkos. So would you like to add point E to it? Councillor Tarkos? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, if I could add an additional.
We've got an amendment motion, so you agree with A, B, C, D?
Yes.
And we need to word E? Okay. Just clarification here, because councillor Tarkos, you moved it based on what's there currently. And councillor Allen agreed to what's there. Are you happy councillor Allen to second the amended motion?
I just had a question for council officers, just to understand what the effects of that additional recommendation would have.
Could I ask Mr Walsh to come back on screen, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the purpose of clarity, the submission is not to Melbourne Airport, but rather to the advisory committee. So it would be possible to include additional points in our cover letter to the submission regarding any additional things that the council would wish to include. And I understand that if, for the purpose of, yes, that would be good if we could document the key points, of course.
All right. Yeah. Okay, councillor Tarkos, maybe in one or two sentences, could you read or tell us what you would like added?
That the consideration be given and possible extension for the submission.
Just a little bit slower, because this has been typed up. That the consideration? What were the first few words?
That consideration be given for extending the submission process.
Slow down a little bit. You've got that? Okay, and?
For the schools that are going to be impacted by this this particular, well, to the. So the school population that is directly beneath the flight path to be given the opportunity to provide a submission. And also other community members that may not have English as their first language to also.
Councillor Tarkos, they're trying to copy this while you're talking, so a bit slower. A bit slower. So we've got the schools, we've got the.
Cold community.
The cold, so C A L D community, yep.
And also the aged care facilities in the area because of the impact sensitivity for older people with aviation noise.
So aged care facilities. Hang on. Have you got that? All right, aged care facilities.
And I think I've covered.
And what about other organisations under that flight path?
Exactly. Well, that would be great. Kindergartens.
Okay, it's been typed up. It's going to come on the screen in a minute. So request Melbourne Airport, let's be, hang on.
So through you, Madam Mayor, if I may just clarify that the request would be made to the Melbourne Airport's Environment Safety Standing Advisory Committee.
For MESAC.
Rather than to Melbourne Airport.
Okay. We can, okay. Could we add that in the? Okay, so is that all right, Mr Walsh? What's on the screen now?
Requests Melbourne Airport considers extending the submission process for. I think I heard councillor Tarkos say extends the exhibition, extends the submission process and includes, comma, and includes targeted consultation or targeted engagement for school populations, cold community, aged care facilities and other organisations.
And other organisations.
Can I add in one thing around our parks providers?
You can't at the moment. This isn't a discussion. This is an amendment that we need to finalize. Then we've got to see if councillor Allen will still second it. Otherwise it will. I've got to put it forward to councillors again. Yeah. So do you want me to leave? Oh, yep. We just have to, we've missed some of the wording, but Virginia?
Yes.
Are you happy with?
Yes.
Us adding that in as an amended motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, so do I have a seconder? Sorry, it's got to go back to councillors. Do I have a seconder for this amended motion? Councillor Allen, you're happy with that? Okay, all right. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this?
Well, just to reiterate that, given the complexity.
How many, a minute? You've got about a minute left from the additional time that you had before.
Just to reiterate that, given the complexity of this process, I think it's important that consultation and engagement process involves a lot more stakeholders than just. I think our submission is excellent, but I think it should, given that there's a pandemic and the consultation process has been somewhat difficult for a lot of other stakeholders that the airport, I mean, sorry, the MESAC should consider extending it for the other groups as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, would the seconder like to make any comments?
Bit on the fly, but all good, yes. I echo councillor Tarkos's earlier statement from the first part of it. And yeah, look, I'm fine with this position.
Councillor Borg? Councillor Borg, we can't hear you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This draft submission is highly welcomed with prospective significant changes to Melbourne Airport. It's important to balance the safeguarding with Melbourne Airport with facilitating the appropriate growth of Melbourne. Council submission response to key matters with regards to the guidelines within the framework. And also looks at how the framework may be further implemented in Victoria's planning system. Meaningful implementation of the framework requires the Victorian Government to amend all planning schemes in a timely manner. Some highlights include a national approach to planning for airports and the environment. A more streamlined approach is required. A consistent approach to the application of the guidelines could contribute to uniform outcomes. Safety issues with regards to wind shear and turbulence. There is no guidance on building heights at airports, better management of impact of aircraft noise and so on. This is a very highly comprehensive draft submission. I also endorse councillor Tarkos's addition to these recommendations. And I would also like to commend the great work that has been put into this draft submission. So thank you, everyone involved.
Thank you, councillor Borg, as I said. All right, any other speakers for this report? Councillor Headitch?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to commend the amendments that have come forward. I'd also like to propose that we add in the parks community to the amendment if councillor Tarkos is willing to. We have Brimbank Park, we have Sydenham Park. We have lots of parks up the Mirabong Valley corridor of Brimbank's own parks that are fairly affected by noise points in time. And users who are at for health and wellbeing outcomes have their visits and that affected. So I think it needs to be taken into account when the next process starts up. And that Parks Community, Parks Victoria and Brimbank Park, where it owns parks that are in these areas. We look forward to submissions from them. I'd also like to say, if that could be added, that would be great to parks.
I'm going to go through that process in a minute.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that you want to add to, sorry, add to the amendment besides parks? We're just trying to.
No, I didn't want to add any more, but I did want to say some more.
Yes, that's fine.
Things. I guess the other thing is that we are very lucky in this community. We have a couple of really strong groups. One, the Melbourne Airport Action Group, that Hannah Robinson is doing some great work with. And I know they've made a submission to this. And I'd encourage that group to put their submissions to council, to be incorporated in council's thinking and responses when the time comes again. And also we have another group on the edge of Brimbank, just in the city of Hume, that Michael House and heads up, also making a submission, a good quality submission to this process. And it would be great if both of those could be sent to the council and incorporated with all the other documents council's keeping on this, so that it can be referenced in future advice back to government and to MESAC and various other organisations and bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Now, adding the word parks in there, we need to make an amendment on top of the amendment. Okay, so first councillor Tarkos, are you happy to add the amendment? Councillor Headitch would like to add to your amendment?
Yes, I'm happy to include parks as well.
All right. Yeah. So I've got to ask councillor Tarkos first. So she's happy with that. Now councillor Headitch, this becomes a little bit complicated. Can you read the amendment of councillor Tarkos's and just add the word parks in there?
Yep.
That's the new amendment?
So I would like to put the motion, that is, the amended motion that's been presented on the screen at the moment and add in the word parks to it.
State government parks?
Just parks. I think the state government, and there's Brimbank as well. Brimbank has parks, Sydenham.
Why don't we just say government parks? It covers all state, local government and federal.
That's fine. I'll be happy with that, Madam Mayor, yep.
So you're happy with all the others, A, B, C and D, the original?
Happy with the amended motion that's coming forward, yeah.
Okay. Julian's trying to complicate things here for me. Okay, so the amended, the first amendment was what councillor Tarkos had. The additional amendment is to add the word parks. We need to pass the additional amendment first. All right. All right, can you put that on the screen, please? All right. Yeah. So we've got two Bs on the screen at the moment. So the new B is the second B, Julian? Okay. So the highlighted one is the latest amendment, is it? Where's parks? So we'll add parks after aged care. Are you happy with that, councillor Headitch?
Certainly.
Okay. Comma, parks and other organisations. Okay. Councillor Headitch moves an amendment on top of the other amendment. Do I have a seconder for that, please? Councillor Goodrich, thank you. All right, I'll put that to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried. Now, do I go to the amended council? So, okay. So this now becomes the new substantive motion. Okay, so we need to vote. There are five different points instead of four, with two lots of amendments made in them. So we need to pass the new substantive motion. I've got it. Okay. All those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. Hooray, we've got through that. Okay, let's get to the next item. 12.8 State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria. Mr Walsh, could you please present this report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council will recall that they deferred this item at the August ordinary council meeting. So the purpose of this report is for council to note that council officers have provided a submission to the review into the decriminalisation of sex work in Victoria, shown at attachment one. And so the officer recommendation is for council to note the submission shown at attachment one. And note that the council officers have provided this submission to the inquiry. And the council is asked to endorse the submission and provides written advice to the inquiry secretariat of its decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Mr Headitch? Councillor Headitch, sorry.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I noticed in the earlier part of the meeting, in the public questions, we had a couple of questions come in that seemed to intimate that there was an underlying issue around the use of investigators and the impact it may have on sex workers. Can director Walsh give us some insight into what the issue that's been flagged in those questions might be?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's difficult for me to speak for the questioners, you know, for someone who makes a submission to council.
Can I just add to that, Mr Walsh, that it was brought up at the briefing that we had a couple of days. had a couple of days ago and it was addressed?
Okay.
So, and there was also information forwarded today to councillors on the questions that were based at the last briefing. So.
Director Walsh, my question is regarding the, I think, what I saw there was an assumption that there was an impact on the sex worker as a result of the work that we're doing potentially. Is that the issue that was brought up in the briefing? I wasn't at that briefing, I was away.
Through you, Madam Mayor. There have been, there are divergent views on the use of independent investigators and the way in which those investigators gather evidence. And that was certainly in briefing, in the Sex Work Law Reform Victoria briefing council, there was a discussion about that and about then the ethical and moral, probably not moral, the ethical dilemma that that dynamic sets up between the discussion between an investigator and a sex worker. And there was a little bit of discussion about that as an ethical dilemma in an investigatory
Okay, it's a difficult question to answer. Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any other questions or points of clarification? Okay. Could I have a mover for this report, please? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Do I have a second? Councillor Bourg? Okay, councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to this recommendation?
Just simply to say to Madam Mayor that I think I have enough information now. Since the deferral at the last council meeting, we've also had a couple of briefings, we've read a lot of material about it, and I'm quite happy to endorse the officer's recommendation and the submission. Thank you.
Would the second like to comment on this recommendation?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Victoria's sex industry is regulated under the Sex Work Act 1994 and the Sex Work Regulation. Council acknowledges the community's concerns about illegal brothels being established in premises that present as message parlours in Brimbank. Submission focuses on five key areas: advantages of decriminalising sex work, regulatory and enforcement responsibilities, planning system, licensing and worker safety. Introducing a model to decriminalise sex work in Victoria has the ability to streamline the regulations and enforcement of sex work and enable sex workers to operate like any other legitimate business. However, whilst a decriminalised model will allow council to have the ability to use planning power to regulate sex industry businesses through compliance with planning policies, it will only be successful if relevant legislation is consistent across the state and with other relevant legislation. In a successful decriminalised model, sex work would not be treated different to other work and therefore should reduce the level of monitoring and registration undertaken by the government and enforcement, undertaken by police, councils and other regulatory It's important to note that irrespective of whether sex work is decriminalised, it is recommended that local government should continue to act as the responsible authority to ensure brothels and sex works are appropriately located and authorised pursuant to a planning permit. I'm happy to support the recommendations presented by the council officers.
Thank you, councillor Bourg. Are there any other speakers for this recommendation? Councillor Hiddich? Yes.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I've watched this one with interest and I can only see a wicked problem. The officer's report and submission has gone in. The process closes very soon. And I guess my point of view is that in this city, we've had a big problem with illegal brothels in different residential areas. And, you know, around our way here, we've observed girls getting in the back of trucks and new, lots of girls coming into houses and the houses are being run presumably by people of ill repute and the women involved are not in the best of circumstances. So for me, I think there is an obligation to try and prevent that illegal brothel, I guess, sub-industry growing and the impacts on women and men who work in it, I guess, minimised, the harm minimised, I call it all that. I hear the comments that are coming from the reformers about the potential impacts on sex workers and not the those who are running these illegal entities. And I hear that. And for me, I think as a community, we do need to eliminate as best as we can that illegal subculture and industry that is prevalent around this place. But we also need to acknowledge that the women working in there are individuals being affected more probably than the organisations that are running these shows.
One minute, councillor Hiddich.
So for me, I find it important that the council does continue its work and that the submission that's been made highlights that. It's a very different, difficult place to regulate, but I also have a great concern that the women involved in that industry aren't the ones that are fined and, you know, affected most by action that the council may take. So I'm not sure on this at all and I am going to abstain from voting on this one.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other comments by councillors?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the parental to infect our community, in losing the public trust and customer service impact. The potential for sex worker to work in the resident area may be, may infect in our community through a loss of amenity due to a restricted how of operation, lack of safety and security for residents and as for children and vulnerable residents to property activity if not regular. I think the review of attendance and sex work, we need to consider regulation related to the occupation, the health and safety, building, environment, health and planning. Our local government hugely play an important role in regarding, in enforcing sex work, lessing in significant effect of result. And I think for the sex work could remove criminal flow and very regulatory control relate to broader in sex work. Change of regulation may have impact to the health and safety of our community. A porter or unlikely to be licensed for control of Victoria Police and sex work could be conduct of the resident area. I think there is no environment or financial risk to identify. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Any other speakers for this recommendation? All right, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? One, two, three, sorry, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All those against? All right, pass, thank you. All right. Item 12.9, the St Albans Leisure Centre redevelopment facility naming. I invite Mr Hogan, could you please present this report? I'll just go on mute.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council and community would be aware that the St Albans Leisure Centre is currently undergoing large-scale redevelopment. The new building requires a name and council is asked to consider four names recommended by the Facility Naming Advisory Committee following a month-long community consultation campaign. Council received 314 submissions and 256 unique names. Any names selected by council will precipitate a further round of public consultation to hear any objections as part of the geographic names Victoria process for final approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you all hear that clearly because it was echoing for me in here? Okay, all right, good. All right, any questions or points of clarification, councillor Bourg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr Hogan, did council check with traditional owner, the names, whether the names are appropriate, correct and suitable?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is the case. On the 26th of August, I did a presentation to Batsick, the Brimbank Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Consultative Committee, where it was brought to their attention. They were asked if they had any feedback or any names or any suggestions that might be appropriate for the committee and later council to consider. Further to that, council remember in the August council meeting establishing a naming committee, which did include representation from the Orangery Waiwurung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation representative from that to ensure that Indigenous and traditional owner names were considered within that process. Further to that, the naming rules and regulations set out by geographic names Victoria make it clear that organisations clearly consider traditional owner names in naming conventions.
Thank you. Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions. The first one is regarding the Aboriginal names themselves and the meaning. And the other part to that question is the priorities that the Aboriginal community put on those names that have Aboriginal connotations and histories.
Thank you for your question, councillor Hiddich. Through the chair. Three traditional owner names there for consideration of council. Maran Balak Centre, Womin Jaker Centre and Brimbank Dara. Maran Balak was the, I want to make sure that I'm careful with my phrasing here, but that was the peoples who were the traditional owners of the land, were known as the Maran Barak Pillar, sorry, Maran Balak people, local to the area. Womin Jenka is the name for welcome, so that would translated be the Welcome Centre. And Dara means heart, so Brimbank Dara would mean the Brimbank heart. Insofar as the priority goes, that was not indicated during the naming committee meeting itself, nor later, when the corporation was asked to verify the appropriateness of the names considered, the spelling and the translations.
Councillors, are there any other questions? Councillor David?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just a year and a half or two years ago, we toured Victoria, we did a council to see the new facilities, leisure centres. And I must say, Madam Mayor, that all of those centres, they named their, the naming with something to do with water. And after all.
Councillor David, is this a question for Mr Hogan?
Well, not so much a question, but I.
But you can talk to.
But, okay, all right.
This is an opportunity to ask the director any questions or points of clarification?
Well, we did clarify that and I respect the Indigenous people in the names concerned, but we have to do something with community access.
Okay, councillor Hiddich, did you ask two questions before? Sorry, I can't hear you.
I asked one about the Aboriginal names and priority of the Aboriginal names and I asked my second one about Brimbank, the word Brimbank. And I'm seeking advice through the facility naming advisory committee about why Brimbank has been chosen, given that this new centre focuses on the northwestern suburbs of Brimbank and the east Milton area, about 50% each for usage. I'm just wondering why we're choosing Brimbank when that's the catchment area.
Mr Hogan, would you like to respond to that or?
To the extent that I can, knowing that this will be paraphrasing some of the discussion that occurred between the members of the community. It was thought that given the legal nature, the size and significance of this facility, that it was appropriate to refer to it as a Brimbank Centre. Whereas suburb names such as Keelaw Downes or other were not appropriate, given it had some perhaps inaccuracy in relation to the location not being strictly speaking within St Albans. And then further to that, not seeking to be too provincial or to see it as a suburban level facility, something to be enjoyed by the entire municipality.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Any other questions, councillors? All right, do I have a mover for this recommendation? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation with at part A, Brimbank Aquatic and Wellness Centre being included.
Okay. Do I have a second for this? Councillor Aziz? Thank you. All right, would the mover like to speak to the recommendation?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I think we've come to a point where we have to name this facility. We're suggesting a name. It's actually going to go out there even more. If there are any serious objections, of course, they'll be brought back to the council and I'm sure another process will be enacted. But in the meantime, this council endorsed a process. The council has now gone through the process. Community representatives actually came along and gave their views and were part of the process. I'd like to see the centre named, possibly, not necessarily maybe the one that's there, but that's the one that I consider, well, me, I'm moving the motion, so that's the one that I consider should be the one that goes out to the community. And of course, if there were any objections, as I said, the community will come back to us with any of those objections. 314 submissions, 250. 314 submissions, 256 different names. I think the committee had its work cut out for it, I really do. But I'd also like to mention, Madam Mayor, while we're having this discussion, there are many rooms within the Wellness Centre and the Aquatic Centre. It can be referred back to the heritage of this area, which is the Wurundjeri people. So perhaps naming the cafe with an Aboriginal name or one of the rooms with an Aboriginal name. There's many, many ways that we can actually encompass all of that. But I'm sure that the community will give us their views on this, Madam Mayor. I look forward to the community engagement process and the results of it coming back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Aziz, would you like to say a few words for this recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with councillor Goodie-Chair. All the names that, the Aboriginal names would be really nice to come back as names of rooms, cafes and things like that. And I just, I really think that the Brimbank Aquatic Centre, Wellness Centre, sounds really nice to me and I really like that name. And thank you to everyone that's been involved because I know it's been a hard process and to come down to four names, it's been amazing. So thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you well said, councillor Aziz. Any other speakers for this recommendation? Councillor Headitch?
I'd like to speak against it, Madam Mayor. On a number of grounds, I find that the recommendation is outrageous. It's outrageous because we've had, we've had an advisory committee meet and consider all those names that the committees put in the process. They've come up with Maran Bullock, seven votes, Womin Jenka, six votes, Brimbank Aquatic and Wellness Centre, five votes, and Brimbank Dara, three votes. Yet we have a councillor putting forward a third choice of the advisory committee without a real justification other than a personal choice. I also think that from the answer that Director Hogan gave us earlier, it's outrageous because we have at the other end of the Brimbank city, the southern end, another regional facility that was developed 10 years ago as a regional facility, which focuses on the southern suburbs of Brimbank and a number of suburbs in the city of Marybonong. And it equally could have been called, under this logic, Brimbank back in its day, but it wasn't because it reflected a regional centre as it was known then. So for me, the name has issues on two fronts. It is not the choice of the advisory committee and that, I think, is a fundamental issue. I think the use of the word Brimbank is a fundamental issue. Council has not been briefed or discussed this before tonight. We're getting a report like this. And I guess for me, it also is insulting to the Indigenous community to start talking about naming rooms like cafes and others after such, using such fabulous names. And to me, that's a real insult. So I'll be saying openly and widely, this has been an outrageous choice and I will be voting against it tonight.
Okay, thank you, councillor Headitch. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Farm and then councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Together with councillor Bork last time when we have the meeting with the RAP committee, it was very emotional that I also want to express their feeling as well about the name, that they haven't be, be able to get involved from the early stage. And they're also quite upset that, you know, if this major centre is not naming that based on the Wurundjeri, you know, name background as well. So I don't know how they're going to feel about this and, you know, if we, we don't choose any of those Indigenous names for the centre. Thank you.
Okay, councillors, before we continue, we need to extend the time. Could I have someone move forward that we extend the time by 30 minutes? A mover, please. Councillor Goodie-Chair, seconded by councillor David. All those in favour? Against, carried. Thank you. All right. Any other speakers for this recommendation? Sorry, yes, that's right, councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the name Brimbank Aquatic and Wellbeing Centre is an excellent name for this facility. It gives recognition to, we are Brimbank and we're proud to be Brimbank. And our signature project being called that is quite appropriate. And I think an absolute delight to think that we are involved in that sort of naming process and that we would have a grand facility such as this, give recognition to where it's located in Brimbank. In terms of, it's also stated, Aquatic and Wellbeing recognises the incredible uniqueness of this facility, that it is a wellbeing centre as well as aquatic centre. And I think the combination that's been developed there through the committee and well done to the committee in developing that name, an excellent, excellent choice, which we can all be very proud of and is clearly recognisable for the uses that are proposed. I think I'm certainly greatly in favour of parks and things taking on Aboriginal names and as suggested rooms be given Aboriginal names is certainly a great way to recognise the Aboriginal culture. However, in this case, I think where we have this type of facility, where people know, need to know where it is, how to get there, this is quite an appropriate name. So well done to the committee and, and thank you. I'd recommend that name and will be supporting that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Allen?
Sorry, I don't understand. If it seems...
Is this a question?
Yeah. So if it seems as if there's a difference of opinion between the number one choice by the committee and the preferred choice by councillors and that this is going to go out for consultation again, why wouldn't you then present the number one choice by the committee and the number one choice by councillors and then put those two names out for consultation?
Through the chair. Clarity, the committee was asked to select four names.
Yeah.
I think they initially had 256 unique names to choose from. They went through a process of elimination, had a broad range of discussions and the intent was that they would be four names at the end of deliberation for council to select between. So while the minutes show the votes that were received for each particular name, they were all tied for first, if that makes any sense, that they sought to have four names for council to consider. It was always the intent of the process for the council, despite a month-long community consultation process, to be able to make their own decision and determination in selecting the name for this facility moving forward. In so far as the next community consultation period, that's an expectation under the naming rules of the responsible state department, geographic names Victoria, to ensure that any name selected, there's a process that allows objections. And those objections are normally in relation to procedural anomaly. Hasn't there not been enough community consultation? What has been the process? Has this been appropriately ratified, such as coming to council tonight? If those things are satisfied, if it is conformed with the naming regulations and there is no objections that can be sustained, then it would necessarily move to this, to be ratified by the following council and then submitted to the officer geographic names. So that's the process. To be honest, the community consultation phase such as we had at the outset, it's not something that was strictly necessary, but we thought it appropriate to go to the community given the significance of this facility.
So just to clarify, there is, because I'm looking at the officer recommendation and it says selects blank as the official proposed name. So right now we are selecting one of those four, not submitting the, the top four that then go out for consultation.
So councillor Goodie-Chair already has...
Yeah, I'd, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the recommendation or that's been by councillor Goodie-Chair? So that's what we're discussing and that's what we'll be voting on.
Yeah.
If it lapses, what's the next step? All right, so someone else will be able to move another name?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions before we go to councillor Goodie-Chair for right of reply? Is that a question, councillor Goodie-Chair? Yep.
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor. Part B of the recommendation states authorises officers to begin the community engagement process required to facilitate community feedback and any objections to the proposed name at an appropriate time. So I'm presuming that there will be another community engagement process?
That's right, councillor. That will be to hear any objections.
Right. Thank you, Mr Hogan.
Okay. Any other? When I come back to her. Any other councillors that would like to speak to this? Councillor Headitch, you've already spoken, so I'll go back to councillor Goodie-Chair. Could you please clarify the name so we can put it in before it goes to a vote, please?
Yes, it's the Brimbank Aquatic and Wellness Centre.
Okay. All right. Now councillor Goodie-Chair, you've got an opportunity to the right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I take on board all the comments by the other councillors. But I think it's important that we recognise that it's the Brimbank council that's actually building this centre. It's our right payers money which is building it as well. I think by having the name Brimbank there signifies that it is something that belongs to Brimbank and of course it's open for everyone to come to. I mean, I'm sure a lot of us have gone to other leisure centres in our lifetimes. You're not going to only stay in the one in your municipality. And look, for me, it was a personal choice to choose that. And I also have to reiterate, Madam Mayor, that when I said that other rooms or a cafe could have Aboriginals aims, that is my personal view entirely. It is not in the report. So I just said that just to say it. It is my personal view. But look, I really believe that that is the name that is probably better. But again, if councillors don't want to vote for that, I'm quite open to discussion, Madam Mayor. But I'm sure that the community engagement will draw out any issues that there may be. And they may also seek, community members may also seek information about any of the other names. So really, at the end of the day, we're about to enter another community engagement process to finalise the naming of this absolutely fantastic, once in a lifetime World Opportunity Wellness Centre. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, councillors, I'll put this recommendation to a vote with the name being in the Brimbank Aquatic and Wellness Centre. All right. All those in favour of this name? Hands up, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? One, two, three, four. And did someone abstain then? No vote? Okay. So it's passed?
I'm abstaining, Madam Mayor.
Oh, councillor Headitch, councillor David abstained. All right. All right, so it's passed. Thank you.
Division, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, a division. Okay. All right. All those in favour? Hands up again, please. Okay. Councillor Trum, councillor Aziz, councillor Allen, councillor Goodie-Chair, councillor Lancashire and councillor Papafodeo. All those against? Councillor Bork, councillor Tarkos, councillor Headitch and councillor Farm and one abstaining councillor David. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next item, 12.10 Financial Statements 2019-20 and Performance Statement 2019-20. Mr Ma, I invite you to present this report and you're slightly disappearing, your face is not clear.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Forward a little bit, Mr Ma.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The financial statements for 2019-20 and the performance statement for the same period are presented to council for consideration. Council's Audit and Risk Committee considered these accounts at its meeting on the 4th of September and recommended that council approves in principle the financial statements and performance statements, subject to any changes by the auditor. And the Chair of the Audit and Risk Committee updated council on this earlier tonight, this evening. It is recommended that council improve, improve in principle the financial statements and the performance statements prior to them being forwarded to the Victorian Audit General's office for finalisation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillors, are there any questions for Mr Ma? Okay. Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Trum, thank you. Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Mayor. I just have made a few notes. This falls under my portfolio of Brimbank innovation. So the report shows our financial performance ensuring the delivery of services and programmes that support our diverse community and make Brimbank stronger. Prior to forwarding the financial statements of 1920, the performance statement 1920 to the Victorian Audit General, council is required to consider in principle improvement of the statements. The operating result for the financial year 30th of June 20 is a surplus of 11.3 million against a budgeted surplus of 14.9 million. Cash balances for the financial year ended 30th of June 20 was 75.2 million compared to the budgeted cash balance of 53.9 million. The results of council's risk assessment for financial sustainability places council's overall financial sustainability in the low risk category, which is extremely good for us, Madam Mayor, considering what we've had to go through in the last budget. And I think, I'm hoping, of course, that that will still continue into the next budget because we are facing quite a difficult budget, a mid-year review and of course, the next budget as well. The performance statement contains 30 prescribed indicators and measures, including 12 of service performance, 12 of financial performance and six for sustainable capacity. The initial audit has been completed by the Audit and Risk Committee at its meeting on the 4th of September, as we heard from Mr Harry before. And the Audit Risk Committee has recommended that council approves in principle the financial statements and performance statement, subject to any further changes by the auditor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Trum, would you like to say a few words? No?
Yeah, no. I can, it's, yes, to act on a little bit, it rely about the council right for the president. I can, it due to the, but, but it makes it a lot of president it concern and worry you to they lost their income and they all, all were contacted council, rely about if we can postpone the council or right on.
Councillor Trum, this isn't talking about a budget, this is talking about the financial statements, you know, like the bank statements?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have any... Do you have any questions on the financial statements?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are you happy to second it, councillor Trum? Yes? Okay, okay, thank you. Councillor Aziz, I believe you had disappeared and you've just come back. Could you please announce yourself?
Councillor Genevieve Aziz.
Thank you, and audit cards please, everyone. Thank you, everyone, okay. All right. So what am I up to? I've lost track. Oh, right, financial statements. Okay, we've had councillor Goodie-Chair move it, we've had councillor Trum second it. Do I have any other speakers, councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam, thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to focus on one of the points that councillor Goodie-Chair raised, the, the one where we have the risk assessment of financial sustainability indicators and that net result is low, adjusted underlying result is medium, liquidity low, internal financing medium, indebtedness low, capital replacement low and renewal gap low. And we have had a difficult time over the four years. We've been, we started off with a million dollars' worth of opportunity. We are now financing a number of major projects and, and a COVID problem that will not go away for many years. But despite all that and despite all the predictions and everything else, we've retained our principally low-risk profile all the way through this council. It begs the question, a question that I keep asking, is when we're going to do a bit more? I look forward to the mid-year review coming up and council doing a few more things around particular areas like bike paths and walking paths and foot paths and all those things we didn't do when we had the opportunity last time, when we seriously had a low-risk profile in place. So I commend the council officers for retaining that diligent approach to looking after the profile and to the results that have been put forward. But I also ask that the councillors, when the next opportunity comes up, mid-year review or the following budget, do the right thing by community and do a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other comments from councillors? All right, I'll put it forward to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. 12.11 Brimbank Council Plan Year 3 Quarter, Fourth Quarter Progress Report, Miss Stumble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider noting the progress made towards implementation of the council plan for the fourth quarter 2019 to 2020, April to June. This progress report provides results and analysis for the 114 actions in the council annual action plan year three for the fourth quarter period. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stumble. Councillors, are there any questions for Miss Stumble or any points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodie-Chair? A second down? Councillor Borg? Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to make some comments to this report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this also falls under my portfolio, Madam Mayor. So the, the Brimbank Council Plan expresses the shared vision of the council. I remember when we first got elected, Madam Mayor, we had quite some sessions on the council plan. And we put down a vision and that vision was that Brimbank is vibrant, harmonious and welcoming, a great place to live, work and grow. I'd like to think that over the last four years, Madam Mayor, we've made Brimbank a better place to live, work and grow and that we've made Brimbank even more welcoming than what it was before. So the council plan actually articulates the outcomes of the council and what it tends to achieve and it does focus on four strategic areas, we all knows what they are. The inclusive community, a livable community, a prosperous community and an innovative and responsive community-first council. So in the interest of public transparency towards the implementation of the council plan, a quarterly report is always completed to measure the progress of the 114 actions, the annual action plan. So the report is for the final quarter and it does say and reveal, Madam Mayor, that council has achieved 86% completion rate despite the impacts of the COVID-19 global pandemic, which is quite an achievement, Madam Mayor, considering that since March, we have been dealing with this COVID pandemic and it has had an impact on all areas of council delivery. But the key achievements included the implementation of a range of plans and strategies, completion of capital works programmes and the delivery of programmes and projects across numerous, numerous council departments. In March this year, severe measures were implemented by all three levels of the Australian government to reduce the spread of the coronavirus and mitigate the impacts on health and wellbeing. The impact of the stage three lockdowns in Brimbank saw the council of, the closure of council facilities, cancellation of programmes and events, reorientation of services from face-to-face to online and the delay in the completion of the 13 council plan actions. So in preparation for the council elected in October 20, background work has commenced to assist the next council in the development of the Brimbank Council Plan 2125. Whoever would have thought, Madam Mayor, that when we first were elected in October 2016 that we would end our term or that new councillors would be coming in, are looking at a completely revised council plan. Just absolutely unbelievable, but I, I would really love to commend everybody, everybody concerned in, in our departments. They've done a wonderful job. I'm sure that the new council will be very, very well-prepared in dealing with a new council plan. Quite an innovative council plan, I would say, considering the circumstances that we find ourselves in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor, I think councillor Goodie-Chair covered it quite well, thank you.
She sure did, an excellent achievement by council.
Thank you.
Any other comments by councillors? All right, I'll put these, these recommendations, oh, sorry, councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I'd like to echo the comments made by councillor Goodie-Chair and Borg. The council plan was, in the first year of this council, a big piece of work and it took a lot of consultation and engagement to come up with it. I think the consultation engagement was strong in spots and weak in others. But nonetheless, a council plan's been put together and it's got just four years and it's been good value. The new council plan that comes next council will have some issues around COVID-19 and public health and wellbeing issues that come with it. I would like to see a stronger focus on public health and wellbeing, maybe in a separate plan, but that's for the next council. But to the officers and everyone involved, and particularly the, the reporting back, we've had a fabulous, a lot of reporting back on this plan from the officers and it has been granular. It has been comprehensive and it has been rigorous in chasing down the different parts of the organisation and finding out what's happening and what's not happening. So I congratulate all the officers involved on a really good piece of work over four years and we have the final pieces in front of us at the moment. And I think, you know, well done to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Any other comments by councillors? All right, I'll put the recommendations forward to vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. All right. Our last report for tonight is the 12.12 Deer Park Rail Corridor Level Crossing Removal Project, September 2020, update and I invite the acting director, Mr. Adrian Gray, to present this report, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In mid-July 2020, the state government announced the fast-tracking of the level crossing removal projects at Fitzgerald Road, Deer and Robertson Road, Deer Park, with work scheduled to start in 2021. Shortly after this announcement, the state government's level crossing removal project team commits community consultation on the level crossing removal projects for a four-week period, seeking community feedback. In August 2020, following the community consultation period, council received preliminary design packages from the level crossing removal project team for both locations, seeking feedback and comments. This report provides an update to council on the community consultation process, the emerging issues raised by the community and council's officers' response to the preliminary design packages and seeks council's consideration of further advocacy to the state government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Mr. Councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification, the urban design principles, as I understand it, relate to the rail corridor project and look to, look to achieve the best urban design outcomes for the project. I guess my question is about, with this report, is about the best site outcomes for public open space, how that is best achieved and, and what mechanisms council uses to determine the best site outcomes for places like the idea of public open space at 274 Forest Street and the Nancy Street Reserve on the southern side of Forest Street.
Yes, thanks, through, through the chair, so, okay, one of the key principles is sense of place, so in negotiating the impacts that this project has on both those pieces of land, we would be looking at, depending upon the characteristics that remain in those places, to get the best environmental or future public use from, from those three reserves. And those discussions are ongoing now, so the, the aim is that through the urban design principles, that we seek the best environmental outcomes and the best use for the community going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or points of clarification by councillors? Okay, question councillor Goodie-Chair?
Madam Mayor, I note that in the report it states that, and I've actually seen it on the shared resources in the portal, that you actually did write a letter to Jacinta, to the, the Honourable Jacinta Allen, requesting further advice on the level crossing. Did we receive a response, Madam Mayor? I couldn't see a response on the portal.
No, not yet. Unless, unless Mr. Whiteside did.
As I understand, it was just last month that you wrote that letter, Madam Mayor?
It was in August, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that council has received a response from the minister. The response was distributed to all councillors and essentially advised that the project is continuing on, encouraged, encouraged council to continue working with the level crossing removal team in relation to the particular concerns that council has. The minister didn't respond to some of the specific aspects that we sought clarification on, based on the feedback that we had received from the community as part of the consultation process. And so from my perspective, obviously council does need to consider tonight whether it does want to provide feedback further to both the minister, both Minister for Transport Infrastructure but also for the Minister for Roads and Road Safety potentially. And given that council will enter into obviously caretaker period and then the election, obviously, the opportunity to come back and report to council to seek a resolution of council will potentially impact our ability to negotiate further outcomes due to those delays. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's what I was referring to. I don't remember seeing in the response anything in the concerns that you had raised. I did see the response, but I, I wanted to know if there was a further response to the community concerns and Mr. Whiteside has answered that adequately for me.
Yeah, I don't believe the letter was specifically responded to mine, it was just more of a generic letter, Mr. Whiteside, is that correct? All right, councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam, thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is to acting CEO Whiteside as well, around the comment made about the ability of officers to negotiate during the, during the caretaker period. My understanding is that officers have been negotiating all the way through already without letters or anything going on, based on the positions of council so far and that that process can continue without, without any hindrance at all, even if there was an amended, an alternate motion put forward tonight, that the process of negotiation discussion would still continue on during the caretaker period irrespective, because, you know, council is just seeking on behalf of the community more and more information, there's so much anxiety out there. So my question to councillor, to acting CEO Whiteside is, what, what are the barriers that he sees coming forward, if there's any change to the, the officer recommendation?
Okay, before Mr. Whiteside answers, sorry. Extension. Yeah, before Mr. Whiteside responds, we need to apply for another extension, so could I please have a mover for the extension? Councillor Goodie-Chair and a second, councillor David, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whiteside.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So just to be clear, council did back in December 2019 provide a authorising environment for council officers through the urban design principles to provide feedback to the Level Crossing Removal Authority on the best outcomes for council and the community based on those, those principles which were developed with, in consultation with the community. In relation to any recommendations or motions tonight, the officer recommendation has specifically, I can't say that word, specifically been crafted to write to the minister to seek clarification, both ministers in relation to a number of issues of concern from the council, in relation to if these matters are to then come back to the council, that likely won't be till late November, December and officers are concerned that the project, given it has been fast-tracked, will have progressed to a point where potentially it'll be too late for that feedback to be provided. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from councillors or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Hiddich?
I'd like to move an alternative motion, Madam Mayor.
Could we have that shared on the screen, please? Okay. Apologies for that. Yes, could we have the shared screen, please? Okay, councillor Hiddich, would you like to just go through your amended motion?
The alternate, yes.
Alternate, yeah.
The council, the first part of A and B are as per the original officer recommendation, so I won't restate those, they're as per that. Point C, a new point C, that omits going to the Minister for Roads and Road Transport. Point C notes the local community feedback to Brimbank Council during and following the recent level crossing removing authority consultation process. D writes to the Minister of Transport Infrastructure, the Honourable Jacinta Allen, restating the community's full support for the timely removal of the rail crossing and seeking further level crossing authority report to the community. and seeking further level crossing authority report to the community for council consideration and decision that, one, identifies how the community priority to retain the RDA public open space has on, has not been incorporated into design options. B makes public the grade separation preliminary design options. Three makes clear the impacts of Fitzgerald Road and Tilburn Road designation hand over to the State Department of Transport on design scope and on the local community. Four makes clear the noise mitigation proposals for each design option. Five outlines broader precinct design considerations and draft concept plans that incorporate a moved RDA station. Clarifies how environmental and biodiversity concerns have been incorporated by the public authority early in design decision making before regulatory approval is required. Seven clarifies access and safety issues identified by Forest Street and West Street RDA residents. Eight clarifies access and safety issues identified by Fitzgerald Road, West Sunshine Residence, the Croatian Catholic Church and other landholders. Nine outlines proposed compensation for the loss of council land due to Fitzgerald Road level crossing removal project. Ten includes any other matters council needs to consider. And E, that council provides an urgent officer report to Brimbank Council for further consideration, outlining its position on the feedback received by the Level Crossing Authority report. Requested a D. The Brimbank Council's role in deciding the preferred future use of council-owned land. The planning scheme control compliance requirements for council. The council's compliance as a public authority with biodiversity requirements early in its urban design decisions. Evaluations of public open space based on highest and best use rather than current uses. Compensation for land both to the north and south of the railway line. Seven, the future use options for scarce usable council-owned public open spaces at two seven four RDA, the Forest Street RDA site. Eight, the future use options for the council-owned Nancy Street Reserve. Nine, the rehabilitation and protection of council public open space at two seventy four Forest Street RDA to restore lost environmental and historical values. Ten, the future siding options for a relocated RDA Green Activity Hub. Eleven, the shared, the extensions of shared user paths and walking paths in the precinct and Whitey Row Corridor. Twelve, the preferred method for valuing loss that includes an assessment of opportunity cost. The future impact of section seven instrument of delegation going to council fifteenth September for approval and other matters deemed necessary for council to consider. And then there is a the standard on the end of it, the COVID clauses. The two COVID clauses that were part of the original officer recommendation.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hiddich. Point seven.
Which one?
Okay, is it point seven? Okay, so if you look at number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, sorry, in red, XIIII, or the future impact of instrument of delegation going to council fifteenth of September for approval. Well, the fifteenth is today.
Yeah, just to clarify, Madam Mayor, just asking that the officers come back with a report on what that means for this project going forward, that's all.
But is that how you interpret it?
It's the future impact. So once, assuming the section seven instrument of delegation goes through tonight, what does that mean for this project going forward? It wasn't clear when this alternative motion was put forward, so it was.
Okay, I was just, I was just informed that the instrument of delegation is not presented to council?
Okay.
Or for approval?
Right.
Oh, so it's a sub delegation from the CEO, so could we remove that?
Yep, you can move that, take that out.
All right, so is that now another amended to the amended? Okay, okay.
Happy to remove that.
All right, so that will mean that there's thirteen now instead of fourteen.
Yeah, yeah. This is all from the community.
Okay. All right, thank you councillor Hiddich. We're removing XIIII, okay. Could I have, do I have a second for this amended, alternative notice motion? Councillor David, thank you. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak to this?
I would indeed, Madam Mayor. I would indeed. And I do, and I do thank the officers for all the work that's gone on. This is a very complex project and it is being fast-tracked and the community has enormous concerns and anxieties with it at the moment. So I understand the difficulties of dealing with this at a council officer level, but also for us as councillors. And I, I make my submission to councillors now with that as back of mind. I think everyone who's involved in this wants to see the level crossing gone. It is great that the Andrews government has put forward this, this, I guess, resource to do this work swiftly. And people are not concerned about that, but they are really anxious about a number of aspects of it that have come up to them during the consultation process that the Level Crossing Authority runs. And they're asking council to help the community achieve a win-win outcome for a, for the community, not a win-lose, not a lose, a lose the RDA green space, but get a get a great removal project. They want to see a better option developed and a win-win option developed with the council, supporting the community and the council working with the Level Crossing Authority and the community working with the Level Crossing Authority. And that's what this is all about. Today, we saw a letter go into the minister from the Albin RDA Community Club, congratulating the minister on the investment that's going on and asking that more time be taken and that the fast track be slowed a bit because it's creating enormous concerns in community and there are a number of major issues. One of the big issues is the design. As we say, there are people challenging the design, saying there are other options. It needs, it needs the authority needs to work harder and it needs to put out a report like it's put out in Lebanon. It showed all the design options and that the justification for not proceeding with some of them and proceeding with the other one. We haven't had that here in this particular project and the the community are now reacting and looking to council for support. And that's what this motion is doing. The council, the community does see the level crossing removal and council at the moment running ahead too fast on the win-lose option and feeling, feeling disempowered and their ability to get a win-win option compromised by that, that pace and that, I guess, feeling of disempowerment. The community is asking the Minister for Transport and Infrastructure to have a, have the authority provide this design options report, but they're also wanting to see council act in its interests and to have a meeting with a whole lot of information come to that meeting that the community can see, particularly around the future use of the two public open spaces. At the moment, we have in, on the RDA one, a decision to develop the RDA Green Activity Hub. We have a decision before us to basically consider a road reserve that's coming, come before us shortly when, if the preferred option was to get up. And the other option is, you know, retain this public open space. And the community wants the council to decide which option is best for community. The community is really concerned about the sheer size and scale of this preferred option. A big loop through most of the front of this public open space on Forest Street and also concerned about the arterial road, the move to arterial roads and what that means for local residents in terms of noise, pollution, dust and all the other things that come with big trucks and others going around this loop and within a hundred metres of local houses and others. The local amenity, the local access to houses and to, and to local areas. Safety, getting across roads and all sorts of things are big issues, the livability of the area with all this impact going on, the noise, as we heard earlier, there is noise there already. There's further noise to come from this big arterial grid. Thank you. Health and wellbeing, all of that are problematic. So this particular, the community is saying loud and clear, it wants the level crossing as soon as possible. It doesn't want to lose the scarce and highly valued public open space it has. This particular notice of, sorry, alternate motion is really thanking the officers for their work, saying from the community that they want to work with them and saying that they want to see the council make a decision based on the information from the Level Crossing Authority that's being sought here. But also the council needs to provide a whole lot more information itself to the community about what its position is and what information the community needs to make an informed choice itself. I thank the Albin RDA Community Club and I thank the number of local residents who've contributed to this alternate motion tonight. It's been a team job and I think we're looking for council to really, I guess, sit back, think, support community in its, in its efforts to have the the Level Crossing Authority put forward preliminary design options that it can see are justified.
Thank you. Councillor, sorry, would the second like to speak to this recommendation? Oh, actually, not recommendation, alternate motion.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just I think most of the, perhaps even the ordinary residents wouldn't understand what councillor Hiddich put forward tonight. But it's a wonderful table of presentation in his alternative recommendation. I have numerous and numerous residents ringing me as well, Madam Mayor, and look, the Sunshine West and the RDA residents, they've been waiting for sixty years for this thing to happen. And you know, they enjoy when we first hear that the level crossings of Station Road and that of, and that of Fitzgerald Road. Very, very happy indeed to hear the announcement, but we expected at all times that the train will go under. And I know I heard the presentation that we had previously that it'll take time perhaps money and the thinking about the, the breach of the, of the freeway or the ring road. But I think with today's modern technology, Madam Mayor, you can do anything. It's a matter of trying to do that, we can, they can do that if they so want to. But they're worrying about the time. Well, if we're waiting for sixty years, surely we can wait one more year. There's nothing wrong with that. Along the way, those years, we lost quite a number, number of people, residents down here through accidents. However, to me, it's, it's something that if we don't have that option for underground in the train, the option is to come forward and go through the land we've got. We've got the land there. I'm referring to the Croatian community there. They only have five, they own five acres of land. The rest of it belongs to council, which we listen, we listen to them.
You've got one minute, councillor David.
Now, I believe is the second option, in my opinion, that's the resident's option is where, go under, through that ground, the land we own and tread into the Cheryl Road. Thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor David. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do acknowledge the concerns raised by the community and I understand they have shared their concerns with council officers and the Level Crossing Authority. These are concerns, the concerns are about environmental issues as well as amenity, access, safety, livability, health and wellbeing. They do support, of course, Fitzgerald Road level crossing removal. However, they also want the best long-term outcome, more specifically with regards to the public open space. It's important that council takes these issues into consideration and I also understand that council is limited with regards to certain decisions as they fall under the jurisdiction of the state government. However, the community needs to be heard and for that reason, I'm happy to support the alternate motion.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Any other speakers for this alternate notice motion? I've got it right, then. Okay, councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Certainly a question based upon the the alternate recommendation. What exactly is it, can I ask a question of the director? What exactly is the alternate recommendation proposing to do as against what is being proposed in the recommendation on? It's not clear to me at this stage what, what actually is this recommendation aimed at achieving.
So could I ask Mr. Gray to come back? There he is.
Through you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that the, the alternate motion is seeking more discussion with the state government and another, another council report to clarify what sort of negotiations or how we go about negotiating the impacts that this project will have on the land, council-owned land on the side of the railway and why are we seeking for that? So we've, we've done that process in terms of the design packages. Not quite sure how another report will facilitate our discussions in line with the current opportunity now that exists to engage with the Level Crossing Removal Project on their design package. But that's how I understand it. So I would like to add in there that a lot of, a lot of the, these, a lot of the issues under E have been, are being discussed now and form part of our advocacy as we perceive right now. And I mentioned in the report the issues around best use, what are we going to do about the RDA Green Activity Hub? How do we maximize and, and maintain the biodiversity, acknowledging whichever option that proceeds, there will be impact. We've got to ensure that we have the best biodiversity outcomes that we can get. So that's how I see it, that I think some of these issues are already covered in the work that we've, in the advocacy that we're proposing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Before we continue, can I just remind councillors, we've got twelve minutes to complete the council meeting. If we don't finish, we will need to meet again tomorrow. So just keep that in mind, please. Councillor Goodrich, is there a question for Mr. Gray? Okay, sorry, councillor Lancashire, had you finished with your question before? You had another question.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Just the, the alternate recommendation seeks further community consultation and it's been indicated in the debate.
It's not a recommendation, councillor Lancashire?
No question.
No, you said the recommendation that councillor Hiddich is putting in, it's not a recommendation, it's an alternate notice of motion.
Correct. In relation to the alternate notice, in relation to the alternate recommendation.
Yes.
Engaging in further public consultation and it's been talked about, delays might be okay. The question is, what are the ramifications in terms of could this possibly delay this shovel-ready project?
That's a question, if you've directed that question to me through, through you, Madam Mayor. I think my, my sense is that it won't delay the project. I think state government's pretty clear. They've said, they've said to us that this is being fast-tracked, that they want to start work on this project early twenty twenty one. They've released the documents now for community consultation and for council to engage in the design process. I'm not sure that we're going to be effective in delaying the project, is my feeling, but. I'm not sure that we're going to be effective in delaying the project, is my feeling, but it's more at this moment, how do we engage? What are we, what are we asking for? How do we ensure that our assets and our public open space functions to the best value it can as a result of these works?
Okay, all right. Councillor Goodrich, I, I will have to make this the last question. We really need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, my question is to councillor Headich. Under point E, you've got all those 13, 13 now, points or 14 points. I'm not quite understanding, you want another officer report to come to council, but we can't consider that officer report as part of this report because we don't know it. A lot of that stuff is already in the report already. And according to Mr. Gray, it's already been considered. So how would another officer report help us at this stage? I agree with the other parts of it, like A, B, C, D, that's fine. I just have a problem with part E.
Okay, can I give you a very brief feedback? The, the point, the point being made.
I'll give you probably 30 seconds to respond.
That's fine. That's all I need, Madam. That's all I need, Madam Mayor. The, the items that are listed there, councillor Goodrich, are the items that the community doesn't know about. And the community is asking that the council make a decision for it in its interests, knowing that information and seeing, seeing it come before council in a report that the community can read. And that's the point of it. So it's a report back to council after the council gets the information on the design options from Level Crossing Authority report that's being asked for and then talks about those other issues in the report. So the community can see what the council's position is and see what the decisions the council will be able to make are after. It has all this information.
But it won't be this current council that can.
No, it won't be this current council. No, no, no. But the community is saying, and councillor David's hearing it too, that there is more time needed and that the community is going to the minister saying that as well.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll have to end it there. I'll put it to a vote. This is we're voting on councillor Headich's alternate notice of motion. If it's lost, then we go back to the original. If it's passed, we, this becomes our substantive motion, notice of motion. All right. So all those in favour of councillor Headich's alternate notice of motion? In favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, passed. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's the end of the reports. Item 14, notices of motion, rescission. There are no rescission motions for this evening. Item 15, urgent business. I'll ask the CEO, is there any urgent business tonight? No, thank you. Item 16, confidential business. There is no confidential business this evening. Meeting closed. Thank you all for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting closed.